Call this meeting to order. Counselor Lyons will be standing as chair for this evening with Counselor Beal absent, Chair Beal. Agenda item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Rules of Order. The council follows the rules of order adopted at its organizational meeting. We will proceed accordingly. Item four, Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Minutes from the following meeting, May 19th, 2025, regular meeting. I'm reading the wrong, I'm reading the old agenda. June 16th, 2025, regular meeting.
Move to accept.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Dain. Item number five, Presentation of Awards. First for, I believe Charlene is not here.
Charlene, her sister's in town visiting and it's her sister's birthday, so they, sorry.
How could this not be how you would expect it to be?
They did not want to come to city council.
That's okay. Well, if I may, I'll just read.
Yes, please do.
City of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Charlene Clemens in recognition of 10 years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library.
It's 30.
Yeah, I thought it was 30.
This says 10, but in recognition of 30 years.
Didn't she retire a few times? So maybe there was.
Consecutive, maybe.
In recognition for a number of years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library. Her devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city in Ellsworth. Give that to us, Sarah. Thank you very much. I know the next award recipient is here. City of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Katina Vandenstein?
Vanadstein.
Vanadstein. In recognition of 20 years.
Yeah.
There we go, we got that one right. Of service as General Assistance Director and Deputy City Clerk. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Thank you very much. Okay, item number five, item number six, City Manager's Report.
Just to start off, to double stamp the huge thanks to Tina Vanadstein. I, you know, she's been here 20 years, but I think what's incredible is just the amazing amount of energy, enthusiasm, creativity, you know, if we can lock her in for another 20, the city of Ellsworth will be extremely, extremely lucky. And I have, every conference, there's big things left to come from Tina and this organization. She's been jumping into the cemetery stuff. There's been a few times where I've, especially earlier in my tenure, where I'd call Michelle or Tammy and they'd say, just talk to Tina, she'll know what to do. And she's, Tina's got this, or I'll say, hey, Tina's working on this, like, okay, Tina's got it. And thank you so much for everything, Tina. So, so excited. A few other things on my report. One, just to follow up on workshop and strategy planning with the council. We had our first meeting on that last week. It was a great initial discussion. We're, for those in the community who may not know, we're switching on August 4th to our first standing workshop. In addition to the city council meeting, once a month, we'll be meeting as a city council to sort of go through things that may not be ready for a city council meeting yet, but are big policies, priorities, strategic backlog items that we need to work on as a council and starting to have, create some space every single month with the full council to start working on those. I'm really excited. I think the strategy discussion we had was interesting in many ways on, you know, how we start working as a council and as a staff to sort of align on priorities. I kind of feel like we're entering a new stage of the organization. And there's one piece where it's like, oh, my gosh, there's so many things in the comprehensive plan and the business attraction plan and what are our general priorities and how do they feed to each of these priorities and how do the council? And then there's the other piece, it's like, we have the team. And I think, Tabitha, you said, I started grinding it out. And Steve, I know there was a real emphasis with you when we were talking about how we structure these meetings and what they should be and just kind of to get the work done. Really feels like with this council and the next one, we'll start setting that up with the right structures to kind of meet this moment. And on that note, council papers are now open. As you mentioned, Nancy, like, we're here to do the fun things, the things that council, we've kind of got the foundation underneath us, so.
Charlie, are they, are they open now?
Friday.
Oh, sorry, Friday, 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 the 25th. Friday, the 25th, nomination papers will be available. There's three seats for the city council that are going to be open, one seat for the library trustees and two open seats for the Ellsworth School Board. There's 50 registered voters to receive any nomination papers, which will be available starting on Friday in the clerk's office. And the deadline for submission is Friday, September 5th at 12:30 PM. Quick update on the EV charging project. Really excited to announce that they're now open and working. So, it's kind of a, I came in this morning, I forgot to charge my vehicle up all the way in Castine, I had enough to get here, but went over to where the free chargers are at now and there was four or five cars already stacked up, the usual suspects, you know, where they're kind of changing. And then I was like, oh, yeah, you know, I think Ashley told me on Friday that she figured out the financing and the systems, now I can just go to City Hall, plug in, pay for it. And there were two other vehicles when I plugged in that were already plugging, were already making money off those chargers instead of spending city charging for funds for free chargers. So, to me, we'll be closing down those, the free chargers soon. We tried to see a way where we could keep them, but we weren't really generating enough revenue, so now we'll be able to have enough capacity so you don't get in that situation where there's not a charger available. Or if you're at the charger, you're actually paying for that service and having the, not having the city carry the whole cost. So, really excited about that. There's also two city EVs that will be using those chargers to re-energize after 5:00 PM as well. So, a big thanks to Ashley from the finance team for getting that figured out. She wasn't hoping to kind of have to figure out grants and these new finance systems and what, how it goes to what account, but she's done a great job of kind of pitching in there. And then to Mike and Amanda from our public works team, they initially talked about the free chargers and how we could change those so that we could make them paid for, and it was complicated, and Mike and Amanda were the ones to actually reach out to revision, figured out that there's these grants available. We're probably some of the last cities to get these grants with it. And so it's, I think it's big for Ellsworth and big for the team for moving so fast there. Quick personnel update on some open job positions that I think we were getting close to making a big announcement on. So, the Parks and Rec Director, we made an offer today. So, hopefully pending a background check and a, and that they accept the offer, we can come to terms on salary and some other things. We'll be having a big announcement in the Parks and Rec Director in the next week or so. And the same thing with the city planner. I think we've, we found a person who has just such an incredible experience set that we're actually want to elevate the planning role to be the Director of Planning and Urban Development. This person's very senior as well. We'll be making the official offer to them tomorrow and if they accept, also hopefully upgrading our current assistant planner into the planner capacity. So, not a change in FTEs or outside of the budget, but it will just be a little bit of a retitling, restructure in that area, so.
FTE is full-time employee?
Full-time employee, thank you, Patrick. So, hopefully we'll get a little more details out to the community on those two big hires. Amazing people, so excited about this and looking forward to more announcements there. And the last big thanks, first on the, on the citizen side of things, Scott Richards from Holland Power Services, our facilities director, Jim reached out to say, hey, I just had this volunteer situation. They were, he was trying to hire this person to figure out how to fasten the dugouts, they don't blow over again, and this person at Demire's Field, and this person just said, I'll do it for free and loves this community, wanted to get out there, did it right away. To me, just like, that's the best of Ellsworth, these types of people. I don't know where they come from, but they're always willing to help and we're just so lucky as a community to have people like Scott Richards from Holland Power Services doing that type of activity for us. And also just wanted to give a big thanks to pretty much the entire public works and highway team, you know, with the High Street project, with the main DOT, it was a ton of extra work they had to kind of apply as things worked out well and then things didn't work out well in some areas and even though it wasn't our project, they were, you know, have been meeting with the state DOT once a week on the project plans, taking a ton of citizen concerns, putting in a ton of extra time to, to make that project as successful as possible. And then they're also dealing with an insanely rainy spring, which created potholes just about everywhere, which created a bunch of other work issues. They had two overnight digs on some water mains that blew out, it was really tough going. And then they switched into a lot of Parks and Recreation even before our Parks and Rec Director has been on board to upgrade there. So, in Nolan Park, you may have been at recently, we've done, you know, dozens and dozens of items that were in the backlog to upgrade at Nolan Park. Beautification down on Main Street, the harbor, they're, you know, outside of City Hall with the new plantings, now that the fire windows have been in there, just, I couldn't be prouder and happier to work with this mission-driven, really hard-working team at the public works department. So, thank you to all of them. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Charlie. Any questions for the city manager? Great. Moving on, item number seven, Committee Reports. First, I'd like to hear the reports from the committees and then we're going to address some requests on some of the commissions and committees. But are there any counselors that would like to make a report for any committees? Counselor Stein?
The Recreation Commission wanted the council and the public to know way ahead of time that the tree lighting and the parade, the Christmas parade and the tree lighting will be conglomerated into one Uber festival, one giant, that's not the official name, all right, we're just. So, that'll be one combo fest, the tree lighting will happen and then we'll transition into the parade. It's going to be on December 6th in the evening, more information to come. And commission's also looking for potential vendors, people to get on board, donations. I know Flexit always donates hot cocoa and some cookies and some other vendors do as well, and it makes it a really special occasion. So, if you're interested in being involved in either the parade or the lighting and as a vendor or as a participant, just reach out to the Recreation Commission through the website or to the new rec department head when that person comes on board.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Any other counselors? Updates? Okay. We have two matters to address regarding committees. One is a request for, of the Ellsworth Housing Authority to appoint Christina McHugh as Tenant Commissioner with a term to expire January 1st, 2030. Is there anyone here in that regard? No. So, we have a memo from the Weston Brem, Executive Director of MDI and Ellsworth Housing Authorities regarding this appointment. I believe we just have the single-page memo. Is anyone else seeing anything else in that regard? Does anyone have any knowledge of this appointment other than this one memo?
Who's the staff assigned to the authority?
I, I mean, I've met with them before, so, had some conversations, but we just actually received a check from them for their, we don't get any funds from those, those locations, but, yeah, they were, they needed this to kind of be fulfilled on their, their roles and they thought this person who lives in that, that place would be the best person for it, so.
Okay. All right. Any discussion from council? Do I have a motion regarding the appointment?
Is there anything in the memo about the timeline of this? Is it, I mean, would we be?
It's retroactive to January 1st, 2025.
For a five-year term.
For a five-year term.
I don't want to hobble the authority, obviously, but we have been sort of leaning toward more thorough vetting of, of all the committees and boards and commissions, just as a matter of course.
Did they ever get back to us, Ebony? I think we tried to get more information. Yeah, so happy to table it if you want the more full, I know it's something Ebony I'd ping these people about some.
Yeah, this is something we've done forever, just appointing somebody to it and kind of just to fulfill the need to have an Ellsworth resident there.
Okay.
And they have always had usually somebody that lives there.
That lives there, okay. And this is not like, they're not interacting with the city in any business otherwise, correct?
This is pretty pro forma for their needs.
I agree with you, John, in most instances, but it sounds like here it's more of a, they just need us to do that and I don't know if we're going to get any more anyways.
Yeah, it's very tammy's description, that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, Counselor Moat, did I see you were about to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Move to approve the request of the Ellsworth Housing Authority to appoint Christina McHugh as Tenant Commissioner with a term to expire 1/1/2030.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? We also have a request to, of the Cemetery Commission to appoint Natasha Minz, Minz, as a full-time member and Teresa Davis as an alternate member with terms to expire June 30, 2026. We have a memo from the Cemetery Commission about these two nominees. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak about the nominations? We have Counselor Smith there.
Simply, if there isn't anyone in the audience, simply as the counselor representative to the Cemetery Commission, both of these nominees attended the most recent meeting, they're both engaged, really interested. They filled out the nomination papers on the website and it looks like Charlie provided a summary of what motivates them to bring them here. They've got a great, between the two of them, it's a really balanced variety of experience and perspectives and priorities that they bring. Teresa's very interested, but asked to be made an alternate member just because of her other requirements. She wanted to make sure that she showed up and did everything expected of her, so I strongly endorse both of them. It was really an interesting and exciting meeting to have them participate and want to step up.
Great. Yeah, I mean, just looking at their backgrounds, they seem very well-suited for the commission and considering their interest and Counselor Smith's support, I feel comfortable appointing them.
With that, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Let's do it.
Which allows for more discussion if there is one.
Let's do it.
Move to approve the appointment of Natasha Minz and as a full member and Teresa Davis as an alternate member of the Cemetery Commission, each with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
One second.
Second, discussion?
I do know Teresa Davis, she's on the Arbor Commission and she is incredibly passionate about the cemetery, the cemeteries. She makes that known most every Arbor Commission meeting, so I, I fully support Teresa. I'm not sure about Natasha, but she sounds great based off this memo.
Great.
Does that bring the commission up to full capacity?
I will have to check. One of the changes is Jen Sala is resigning from her assignments, so she's preparing to move out of town, so that may open up another one.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Item, Agenda item eight, Citizen Comments. This is the period where we allow members of the public to come speak and address the council. We ask that you address matters that are not on the agenda. We will, you know, consider public comments if and as appropriate when we get to these matters. We also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And with that.
Hi, Gordon Morkman, resident of Ellsworth. I've got a couple items, but first I'd like to say thank you for the workers that's working at Nolan Park. They're doing a tremendous job, they're cleaning it up, making it look really nice, working hard. It looks really good. Caleb, Caleb, right? Caleb's doing a wonderful job with the, the other two fellows that's working out there. He's doing great. Second thing, the new council is coming up. I really think there should be a representative placed to go over to the Hancock County Commissioners Meetings to watch how they spend their money and represent Ellsworth. We pay $800,000 a year to them. Mount Desert, Alba Island pay over $2 million. And they need to be watched over there. If you watched the last one, you'll know why. So, that's another recommendation, we should have a representative that goes over to the Commissioners Meeting so they can comment, contribute to public comment or to a discussion on the matters. Third thing, this is more of a money-saving issue. I always pay my water bill like two days prior to what it's due. So, I send it out on Thursdays and the due, and the due date for the water bill's on Saturday. On Monday, I received a late notice saying I was going to have my water shut off. Second, second one. This is the second one. I had a discussion with them, I was quite hot on the first one. I didn't call again this time because evidently, three times you'd make yourself insane trying to figure it out, right? So, what I would recommend is, why don't you, why don't they just wait three or four days past the due date before they send out late notices so you can save money? Because if the due date's on Saturday, people mail their stuff out on Thursday, Friday to meet the due date, they're going to either receive it Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday instead of sending them out the day after the due date. Because I can't imagine how they could have had those all together, sending them out on Monday, pre-dawn. It's kind of odd, so.
Great, and that was water?
We have water, water, sewer.
Yep, thanks as always, Gordon. And I got an email here from our public works administrator noting exactly that, that we, let's have a few more days between sending out that notice, just to make those pieces. And I apologize for that piece, we had a delay in the water meter readings this month. We've had a staffing shortage, we're looking to backfill and hoping to make the offer for our team onto a new water department employee the next couple of days here as well, so hopefully we can be back on track there.
It'd just save a lot of money on stamps, envelopes, copying, all that good stuff.
It's strange that it was due on a Saturday.
Yeah, it was due on Saturday.
So, we're looking to that due on Saturday to piece that.
Yeah, maybe it just got missed.
And it was, yeah, it was Caleb and I think the other two gentlemen were Jared and Kevin from our public works department. And big thanks also to Brian and Nate, our supervisors over there, because they, they've kind of let the three-person crew really work on those at Nolan.
Oh, they're doing a great job.
At Nolan Park.
They're doing good.
City Hall and.
I actually went over and greased all the swings the other day.
Oh, you did?
Thank you.
Oh, I had to. People are out there 1:30 in the morning swinging.
Oh, wow.
So, and since I live right next door, with the window open, you can hear them.
Well, let me know if the lights all turn on at night, that was on our project meeting this morning.
Yeah, they turn on.
Okay, I'll take that as a done call.
Yeah, they turn on.
Thank you, Gordon. See you later.
Yeah, there's a new online portal for utility payments, anybody else seen this?
Yeah.
I think that's in the last few months or so, it seems to be working well, so some people prefer that and.
Is that for water and sewer, John?
I believe so, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, it's one bill for both water and sewer.
You can set up auto pays if that's your thing.
Maybe we can highlight that in a social media post or something, too.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, you can do it if you pay the full bill? Okay, great, thanks for clarifying. I live out in the Boone docks, I don't have any of that. Great, any other citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda item number nine, Counselor Comments. Any comments from the counselors? John?
Just briefly, I said this last year as well, but I'm very happy to have a conversation with anybody who is interested in city government, city council seats. There are, as Charlie said, three up and I know when I got into it three years ago, I had little idea what I'm doing. Arguably, I know slightly more now.
Arguably.
But it's, it's an interesting learning curve and it's a fascinating time and it's an important position, so I would love to talk to anybody who is interested about it and try to convince people to run or at least be as honest as I can about what the position entails and how much time it takes and how much effort it takes. But I, I do believe that everybody should really give some form of, you know, local government a try at some point. It's kind of what direct democracy is all about, you know, changing of, of the guard every once in a while and getting new people in and new ideas in, so very, again, happy to talk. You can find my email on the website.
Great, thank you, John. Any other counselors or comments? Counselor Halloran?
Probably no surprise to anybody in this room, but I'm going to say it anyway, that the city of Ellsworth government is growing way too fast. We're spending way too much money and we're filling positions and creating positions and growing government and it's out of control. You can't drive down High Street without seeing another damn brand-new vehicle. And some of the people that could use vehicles don't have them, some of the people that don't need vehicles have them. This city seems to think leasing is free. Leasing is paying for the use of these vehicles and there's too damn many of them in this town and that the city is paying for. Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth can only take so much and next you'll want to build a new building because you've got too many people in it. Government is growing way too fast. We have positions here that aren't even in our charter. Come on, let's get real. We don't need all of this fluff in government. This is out of control, way out of control. And it's no surprise that I'm angered by that, but it's called Counselor Comments. It's, it's beyond comprehension. All of these new vehicles and new positions and new people, it's out of control. It needs to stop.
City Manager?
Yeah, you know, I, one, the, obviously, the budget was approved for positions moving forward. We added four public safety personnel, two firefighters, a police officer, an additional public dispatcher. We also added a Parks and Rec Director and a city janitor position, which the janitor position is the only new here in terms of full-time employees that are non-public safety is this, the public Parks and Rec Director. The janitorial position actually used to exist in the city prior to them going to consulting services, so in terms of full-time employees in additions to city staff, we are up by one additional public works director and we're up by per council guidance in the approved budget process, we're up four additional full-time employees, two firefighters, one dispatcher and one police officer. So, that's really in terms of driving FTE counts and I did a presentation beforehand on additional staffing over the last five years. The vast majority of the staffing increases have been in the public safety, which makes a lot of sense, we're a growing city, we need to keep those public safety pieces up. Second piece is on the financing piece. This year's budget was a 2.9% increase over the previous year. That's at Consumer Price Index for inflation. I think that was a big goal that I set and the entire team set and this council helped us get to, to have more predictable budgeting, so kind of landing that area. However, if you look back over the past five years, again, the biggest cost drivers in terms of city spending, it's not the leased vehicles or city vehicles, we're spending about $3 million additional per year than we were in 2020 on public safety-type activities. About, I think my math might be incorrect, but about $2 million more in the schools and, you know, some of the positions mentioned here, you know, are pretty, for this piece with the, the planning position would be a retitling, it's not additional FTE or anything like that, it's just a retitling of the position, so.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
Any other counselors with comments? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda? So, for new business, am I supposed to read the consent, anything about the consent agenda? Okay. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the normal sequence of the agenda.
Oh, but there is not a consent agenda.
There is no consent agenda, moving on to new business. Number 10, Public Hearing and Action on the Application of Renewal for the Following Licenses. Danielle Potts, DBA Lakeside Cedar Cabins, 397 Mariahville Road for renewal of a city lodging license. Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743, 317 High Street for renewal of a Class B license. for renewal of a Class B license, vic- particular liquor and amusement. Did I say that?
Victular.
Victular.
Victular, victular liquor, liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state club on-premise with catering malts, spiritus, and venus, Class 1 liquid license. Sounds like a Greek goddess or something. Taste Jamaica LLC, 190 State Street, for renewal of a classy, city classy license, vicular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class 4, 3 and 4 wine and malt liquor license. Melanie Omlor Fox, DBA Helen's Restaurant of Ellsworth, 55 Down East Highway, for renewal of a Class C license, vic- victular? Victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, malt, spiritus, and venus, Class 1, 2, 3 and 4 liquor license. And Roger Whitmore, DBA State Street Market, 116 State Street, for renewal of a Class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state off-premise beer and wine license. I believe this is a public hearing, so I open the public hearing for comments on any of the licenses I just read out. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
As it looks like all licensing fees have been paid, inspections done, and licenses signed off by all required departments, I move to approve all licenses as written.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor? An animus? New business, 617 Bayside LLC, DBA Homestead Motel, 143 Bucksport Road, for a new city lodging license. As this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing for any public comments. Are there any comments on this matter, the public? Seeing none, close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
It's the representative here, as this is a new license?
Yes, so.
I'd love to hear just a little bit about what this will be.
Hello, my name is Tristan Birkenmeyer, representing 617 Bayside. Myself, it's a business partners, we purchased the Homestead Motel. We're rehabbing it, updated the rooms, looking to do what will total, I think, five motel rooms. Like I said, we've updated the interiors of them, looking to really make it a nice lodging establishment. I think the location's great. My partners and I do business both here in Ellsworth, we do a lot of business in Ball Harbor and on MDI as well. We're experienced in the short-term rental and hotel, or motel and cabin things, so we really think we can bring in good business and really do right by the property. So, we're excited to do business, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I think it probably hasn't been a change of usage since it was already lodging before.
That's correct.
How has the rest of the process been, working with the city inspections, licensing, everything?
Only good things to say. Yeah, it's been great. And we've gotten it inspected by the state as well, DHHS, and it passed that inspection. So we are good to go on offense after this.
Do you have a website you'd like to say into the microphone?
We do not at this time. We do, we accept rentals both through Airbnb and also things like that, but we are going to have a website, things like that as well.
Thanks.
I should say, and vice versa, our code enforcement officer, inspections went great, and it's been amazing working with them, so it seems like a great business coming in here. And my drive, it's good to see, back and forth between Castilla and here, I could just see that neon sign.
Yep.
All it up and just...
That's one of the coolest parts.
Any other questions for the gentleman? There we go.
Thank you.
Gold stars all around. Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? How would the council like to proceed?
I'll move to approve a new business license for 617 Bayside LLC, DBA Homestead Motel, for seven rooms. Second.
Second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? An animus? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to number 11. City order 072500, discussion of potential action on authorizing payment of excess funds resulting from the auction of 16 Fifth Street back to the prior owners. I believe we just received a memo at the beginning of this meeting from our legal counsel.
Excuse me?
Yep.
I would like, I sponsored this, and I would like it pushed to a full agenda, a full council. So let's move it to next month when there's a full council.
Do you like to table it?
I'd like to move it to next month when there's a full council.
Okay, so you're requesting a table, Steve?
I'm requesting that it go to next month with a full council.
Move to table.
Move to table. Is there a second?
Okay.
Oh, hang on, is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second to table this matter for next month, push it to next month. Any discussion from the council? No discussion on table. Where we go, no discussion, all those in favor? An animus? Thank you, Sue.
How about you're out early? At the beginning, at least it didn't happen to the end.
I'm gonna stay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, tabled. Number 11, number 12, council order 072501, presentation from the city assessor on evaluations, new evaluations and the mill rate.
Good evening, Larry Gardner, city assessor. And I, I can just, I've been told, try to keep it as brief as possible. I'm sorry, sometimes I do tell some stories, but... But what I'm looking at for the, the new city valuation is, is good. We, we do have an estimate based on when we were doing our budget, and it was estimated we'll go up about 5%. We'll certainly hit that and probably go up a little bit more. So the tax rate with the, with the estimated budget, that was, it's in the budget report online, looking at that, it was going to be $16.84 per thousand. So it's probably gonna, actually, gonna be probably lower than that because we'll, we'll probably have more than 5% increase in the total valuation of the town. So that's a good thing, the tax rate's gonna come down even further than was budgeted. And, you know, the, the thing I'm looking at right now is trying to finish all the pricing, and, and there's a lot of pricing to do. So we, I don't have an estimate, I don't have a final of all this yet, but it, but it's looking really good, going down below the tax rate that was estimated at the end of the budget season.
Great. Can you explain the, you provided a document dated April 24th about main home sales and price decrease in March? Is that provided by you for this packet?
Yeah.
Can you give us the gist of it?
Yeah, there was, that front page talks about main home sales and price, prices decrease in March. Well, March is one month. But if we look, the, the second page of the chart, it shows that Hancock County jumped 15.65%. And that's a big, big increase. And you'll notice, I, I've highlighted Hancock in yellow, but if you look at the other counties, the, the closest thing to Hancock is, was it Oxford? It 12.48% increase in one year. And then you actually have some counties that have went down that much. Like Piscataquis, they went down 14%. So it's, you know, you really can't, you can't really see that, that we're, we're really tight with a state average based on just looking at the county's appreciation rate. But it really stands out that Hancock County is, I guess, a place to, a place to look at and a place to buy with almost a 16% increase in one year, and that's, that's home value increase.
Is there any way to tell how much of that is Ellsworth versus the rest of the county?
I don't have that, but, but, you know, I imagine a lot of it's probably in the appreciation of waterfront property. So we have a lot of waterfront property. So, yeah, that's... I, I didn't get a breakdown of what was Ellsworth versus the rest of county. But if you're in Hancock County, you probably want to come to Ellsworth because we have the best lakes.
Any other questions from the council, earlier?
I just, I appreciate you trying to be concise, I appreciate the memo with the background, but I think maybe one more step of, and so what does this mean for taxpayers? You talked about the mill rate is gonna come in at 16.84? And that's, I thought that was about, is that what we, lower than what we estimated?
That would, that would be a deestimation based on a 5% increase across the board valuations.
So people's, the value of their property, is it gonna be across the board 5%? Or you distinguishing between the different categories you talk about in the memo?
Yeah, there, there's gonna be waterfront, the non-waterfront, and then commercial.
Okay, so three different categories with different increases that average out to 5%?
Yeah, the waterfronts will definitely be a higher increase than non-waterfront, and commercial is not really doing too much. But for appreciation and, and, yeah, it, it, it's gonna be, that, that there's not one percentage that, that's gonna pertain to every property in town. And, and this has always been the case. I remember when we did a, a revaluation in, in 2007, the, you know, the city hadn't done an adjustment for many years, and the, the former city assessor was very good at appraising. I don't know if anybody remembers Gary Gagin, the assessor at the time. But he was a very good appraiser, so, but the appreciation of real estate took off, and and the, the waterfronts always increased every year, a little higher than non-waterfront. And over the years, it, it, it was a pretty good jump. And when, when, that, that year when we were putting out the new values, we, we discussed the possibility of phasing in the new values because some, especially the waterfront, was gonna get hit very hard. And we chose not to do that because if, by doing that, you, you, they're, they're getting...
Right.
They're getting a lower tax than they probably should have, should compared to the others, and so it's, there's always that look at waterfront being... It's, it's just jumps much faster.
Well, I, I appreciate, and anybody who's interested of our overall packet, it starts on page 24, and it's a great perspective for people to look at, so it's good to know that it's not 5% across the board, it depends on the type of property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have a sense of when we'll know the final valuation and mill rate?
Right before commitment. And last year it was, I think, the 22nd of August.
Okay, it's a great day. Really good people are born on that day.
With it being that late, though, isn't that, do we have to adjust our tax due date?
Well, I was, I was expecting that question, and, and, and what I'd like to do is hold off for another week to make that determination so that I know how soon this can be done. And, but it, but, but there is a lot of stuff that needs to be priced, and we may have to, yeah.
When do we typically do our commitment, historically?
Recently. What helps is when, in assessing, and when we have an assistant who's been there for many years, who can do a lot of things, we'd get it in early August. But when, when we don't have an assistant assessor, there's, there's two people in assessing. When we don't have an assistant assessor who's, who's been trained and has a lot of experience with doing general things that help, then we're, we're usually in the late August period.
How much are you expecting for new valuation to offset this percentage increase? The new growth in the city that would be taxed?
I don't have that estimated yet, yeah.
And then what is our threshold of, I think, one of the, the things that I've noticed from Brewer and some other places where they have council discussion on valuation and percentage changes, that it is discussion, that there's, you know, you, you can stick with what the assessor goes towards, but in general valuation, but obviously 5% is a pretty just rough figure, that some have chosen not to increase their percentages as much. And, you know, we have the 2.9%, as for those listening, that's the amount of increase overall in the net appropriation to city spending, both through the school, the county, and the municipal side of the, of the budget. But we've also had some valuation increases, so, you know, we, I think during the budget process, we had those breakdowns of if you had a 5% valuation at this mill rate, the 16.84, this is what it would do to a $200,000 valuation, a $500,000 valuation, a $1 million valuation. But you could also see if we only had a 3% valuation increase across the board. The mill rate would be a little higher because of that, but this would be kind of what the new tax level is based on that would be. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of obviously valuation growth, we don't want to trigger a revaluation, so we don't want to... But Larry, what is that threshold? What are we at currently in terms of not triggering a revaluation, or, so could we, could we pull back to like a 3% or a 4% valuation increase?
Well, when we talk about revaluation, it's, it's, it's more of an equalization program where your data is bad. And, and the quality rating is off. So if, if, as long as your quality rating is good, you know, you, that means your, your data, your, you know, there's always gonna be... I used to work for a mass appraisal company, and, and the data on the property record cards, you know, it, it varies by town and cities, but it's based on how well the assessing department is out picking up permit, permitted construction. And, and we do that every year. So that, that, you know, if, there's always gonna be things that we miss, that we see on the real estate listing pages online. Like, some people may finish their basement without a permit. And, and usually also when you do a, like, call it a revaluation, it's door-to-door, knocking on the door. a revaluation, it's door to door, knocking on the door, asking to come in and see the basement. Well, I think in years past, there was probably a higher percentage of people that would say, oh, yeah, come on in. I've been, been expecting you. But it's not usually the case now. You're, I think you'd be lucky to get like a third of the people who invite you in. And so for, for the cost of doing such a program, it really doesn't help you out to do a door to door mass appraisal. As long as our data, our sketches, our measurements, our bathroom counts, all that is very good quality, then the annual adjustments is all you need to do. But some of these annual adjustments with, you know, the high appreciation rate can be questionable, only because the, you know, if your, if your appreciation of real estate is way too high and your adjustments are not that, not trying to shift and keep up with it, then your ratio sets value, the sale price goes down, and the state expects you to be at least above 70 percent. But, yeah, there, there are, I think, some states where there's a cap on what valuations can increase per year. But I don't think there's, I don't think there is any towns in Maine that have that.
Okay. We'll follow up. We might come back to the finance committee meeting for some additional information here on new valuations, state certifying that we'll get there by that deadline, and the final mill rate calculations.
Great. Anything else from the council? Councilor Haller?
This is the fourth time I've heard this story. And I'm wondering how Ellsworth, is this what all other towns are going through? Is it the same set of circumstances? How does Ellsworth go into next year wondering if we need to delay the mailing of tax bills? This year is obviously questionable. Next year, how does Ellsworth become more efficient in this process?
Well, it all depends, like I said, with, you know, getting a good second person trained to take over doing a lot of things that I do. Right now, I'm basically doing everything but personal property and reading deeds. So, once we get that person trained, she came in in June. And Marcia, who left, she was here three years, but she, she was always working, knowing that she was going to retire in three years. So, that, that's the thing. Once you have an experienced second person in assessing, things will go a lot faster.
And maybe it's the nature of the beast. It just seems like there's so much talk about budget, so much talk about evaluations, and we get right down to the wire, and we don't know if you're going to send a tax bill out or not. There's got to be a, it, maybe it's like the accounting world. It's late no matter what you do. Maybe that's the assessing world. I don't know.
Sounds like just more staff is needed.
Well, I, I can say that during COVID
That, that is what he said.
It's balance.
About outsourcing.
The first year of COVID, remember when everybody had to stay home? Nobody was allowed in the building. We committed in mid-July.
So, the four years I've been here, there's been, have you not had staff to do this? Just, maybe it's just the nature of the beast. Maybe we should just expect this crisis point of mailing bills, delaying bills, giving people, the last thing I want is another bill going out that's overdue when it's going out. So, I guess, I guess, and, and that's going to be on the mark for this year, wondering what happens. So, what I'm hearing from you is next year, it could be different? Or if you had a full staff? Have you not had a full staff to do this for the last four years?
I've, I only have two people, or one extra person in assessing. So
For the last four years?
Yeah.
So that's been the whole problem?
Well, it, it would certainly help if we had another person who could do a lot of the things that I do.
Is there any outsourced opportunities?
Well, it's, no, it's not like you hire a temp or an appraiser.
I'm not stating, I'm asking. I have no idea. I just know that this is the fourth time I've heard the same story. And
Yeah. What I would
I'm just wondering how we change that for next year.
Yeah. Or could we change the actual dates of, of when tax, tax bills are due, that first half, instead of September 15th roughly, to later, maybe late September, and have that going forward?
Does that help?
Let me, let me do an analysis here, Steve, and I'll report back to you at a finance meeting very soon. How about that?
So the one thing that we, we understand is that the earlier we have the due date, the money comes in. That, so if you put it later in the month, then the money doesn't come in as fast.
Fair. But at the same time, four years in a row, I've heard the same story, and we're always wondering if we're going to send a bill out that's overdue before we send it. And there's got to be a way to fix that problem. Rather it's, because, am I wrong? But it seems like it's always
Steve, you are 100,000 percent right. And, you know, we disagree on a lot of things and a lot of areas.
Oh, we do. I don't like your tie either.
You don't have a tie, and that's a violation of the ordinance, by the way.
I pay 20 bucks not to wear a tie every time I'm here for a regular
He's also wearing shorts. That might be another 20, but
Bottom line is this. The man with the answers is here, and I'm asking, is that going to fix it for next year if we, if we push things out to October and April? That's what I'm asking. In your opinion?
I don't think he, you know, he doesn't have to have all the answers here tonight.
No, I'm asking
And ultimately, it's, you know, I should also note that Larry is not the only dependency here. There's myself and the budget team on creating the budget process, passing the budgets, creating that data, suing the tax collector's office, our finance team, our IT team, and getting them out. So there's other dependencies than just Larry. And on that point, the ultimate responsibility is me. And we've been in finance committee meetings where I promised that we were going to, after this happened last year, where we had a delay, that I was going to put new policies and procedures in order to not let this happen again. And I am hopeful that that will not be the case this year. And to some of your points, Steve, on how we get there, I'll report back at finance committee meeting with a little bit more of a deep dive to do that. That wasn't necessarily the subject of this conversation. But you asked some important questions, and it's for business and tax consistency for our residents, our businesses, others, is that they know when their bill's going to come. We worked really hard at a budget process this year for the first time in probably five years, that we passed the budget in a reasonable amount of time, two months before we even statutorily had to. We did that in large measure so that we'd have the time this time around, which hasn't happened in years past. Last year, the budget was passed just before July 1st. So I could see why there was a delay last year. But this year, we passed in a reasonable amount of time with one reason that we worked so hard to do that was so that we could get those bills out on time and have the time to do the calculations, because this 2.9 percent levy hasn't changed for the last two months. I, my expectation is that will still happen. If not, ultimately, that responsibility falls on me, and I'll, I'll figure it out.
There's no doubt there's a lot of moving parts behind what's going on here. But, again, I want to ask this question directly to you because you're the most experienced in the room. If next year it was an October 1st due date, does, what does that do? Does, other than, I'm just a simple question. I know you want to do an analysis of everything, but I'm just asking a simple question. Does an October 1st and an April 1st due date do anything for the process, as you know all the moving parts behind the scene here that none of us do?
Well, if you, if we look back, and with commitment being in late August for some prior years, certainly the, with the September 15th due date for the first half, is, then becomes less than 30 days. And you would, I think, try to have a 30-day, so to maybe late September or the first, first day of October. But then again, you just wouldn't get the money, tax payments in as quick when we may need them quicker. So that, that's why I'm working evenings.
I'm just trying to learn from you. That's all.
Councilor Moat, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we structure our debt payments so that they're due October 1st and April 1st. So that was why we always tried to get it in late the second week of September in order to be able to pay those quickly. So I do think if we did push it off, it would affect our debt payment schedule.
So what I'm hearing is it needs to stay where it is. We just got to find a way to make it happen. Jeff here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Larry? Larry, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Appreciate it. Council number, agenda number 13, Council Order 07250, request of the city manager to ward the contract for consulting services for the capital improvement plan.
Let me hand this over to the deputy who's been leading up our capital improvement planning process and the consultant search process for our new capital improvement plan.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager. Back in April, the council approved to allocate about $45,000 of TIF funding to enter into a contract with a consultant to assist with the development of the one, five, and 10-year capital improvement plan. Since that meeting, staff issued a request for proposals. We posted that to our website, and we had three firms submit proposals by the deadline of May 14. We formed a committee of Mike Harris from Public Works, Amanda Ray from Public Works, Nate from IT, and Sarah from the library to score those proposals. The committee was charged with scoring those proposals based on qualifications, not to look at the price tag associated with the proposals. So the three proposals that we got were from Barry Dunn, Ironlaw Group, and Sewell Company. After review, the committee was kind of locked on Sewell and Barry Dunn. So we brought those two firms in for interviews. The proposals were very different. They had very different levels of effort and very different price tags at the end of the day. So, based on Barry's Dunn work with the city and work at the level that we're looking for, for this initial round of our one, five, and 10-year capital improvement plan, the committee decided to select Barry Dunn for the consulting firm that we would like to enter into contract with for the capital improvement plan. And their budget just happens to be within the budget that was approved in April. So looking to approve the contract with Barry Dunn and the amount of $44,450 to start working on the capital improvement plan development.
Councilor Moat?
Sarah, you said that we actually had already allocated funds for it?
From the, from TIF.
Okay, that's what I thought. And it was in the amount of 45?
45,000, yes.
Okay, perfect.
See, the runner-up here, the Sewell Company, their proposal is over $100,000 more, which it's great to hear, we're going with a less expensive one that's in our budget. But were there things that came up in the interview process that you thought could have been a good idea, or feel like now a loss, having to go with the, the more affordable?
I think that we're still going to get the prioritization of projects that we need for those allocated timelines. Sewell brought on a consultant that specializes just in buildings. So they put a lot of focus on this building and the Moore Center. And I know that this building had a building envelope assessment done not that long ago. And we were thinking that, coupled with the expertise that we have in-house with facilities, that we could just marry those two together. So I think, you know, in a perfect world, if we had a larger budget, that would have been a great value. But given the budget that we had and getting started in this, and I think what Barry Dunn brought on was the tool to manage this ourselves, after we have the CIP developed, that was really attractive to us and helped to prioritize. So that was a value.
And Barry Dunn's also the comp plan folks, right?
Barry Dunn did the comp plan, yes.
So there's nice synergies there. Sewell's also doing our village partnership initiative with the Maine DOT. So there was, and they, you know, they did have a lot of that kind of engineering piece. But also, just to give a little background, you know, especially coming in here, in addition to a complete budget revamp, it was also pretty clear that our capital improvement plan process had gone by the wayside for some time. And it wasn't, except for the previous, Tammy and probably developed big binders of the capital improvement kind of planning process via Excel sheets and those pieces. So we needed to kind of, kind of like the budgeting process, go to more of a digital system, go to more of an independent analysis. There's so much deferred maintenance that we have that this takes the kind of time and effort, because this is going to be, you know, a big prioritization, both for work planning, but also expenses going forward. So it kind of was, Sewell was a little bit too much, maybe a little bit too big and modern. And Barry Dunn was kind of right, you know, not solely internal Excel sheet driven, here's our projects, here's what we think. So a little more independent, a little bit better of a system, knows our comp plan, knows our city, was kind of in the porridge category. This one was just right.
Barry Dunn also had a really nice proposal on a public-facing component of the CIP, which could, they showed us an example, and I apologize, I don't remember the municipality off the top of my head, but I can certainly send that GIS story map around to everyone that a municipality uses. And it is very upfront and center and transparent about how priorities are set and what departments they're coming from and things like that. So that, I think, for our, for our scoring committee was a really attractive piece of the proposal.
Great. Councilor Smith?
Another question. When we look at investing this money, can you talk a little bit about how we're going to keep this relevant so that it isn't, you know, out of date one year later? You've said that it will be designed so that we can keep it up to date. But just a little bit more about what this investment is getting for us on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, the idea is that, kind of like our budgeting process, these two things go hand in hand. So the previous budget process, right, we talked a bit about the capital. We basically used some surplus band funding as a small capital. This was the, what staff decided was the top issues for the year. That this will be a much more holistic version of one, five, 10 years. That we'll have to put new things on, we'll have a process for how those get on there, a system for tracking it so that, you know, because Sarah and I could build an awesome master spreadsheet that we think is where it's at, and then one of us leaves and we don't hold that spreadsheet, it's kind of gone. So I could also see maybe even, you know, it's currently in the charter to keep up a one, five, and 10-year capital improvement plan. That hasn't happened for the previous years. So how do we make it easier for that to happen? How do we make it part of the process going forward, that finance staff, our public work staff, all of the departments kind of know what's in the capital improvement plan, and we make it part of those projects? And when we go to the budget piece, you know, here's our capital improvement plan, here's our budget plan, here's how they're updated every year. And capital improvement isn't just kind of like a subsection for the year in the, in the current budget. But they're really thinking more long-term about these issues.
And I would also just add to that, that at last month's meeting, and it's on later on the agenda, street scan is going to be married into this.
My next question is, how do they integrate?
And the street scan process with a three-year kind of cadence kind of forces us to look at this plan regularly as well. So with those two things happening in conjunction with one another, it kind of forces that to happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Assistant City Manager or City Manager, or questions from the City Manager?
Just a note, I think this should say to, out of the TIF fund for the $44,450, the next one will be the same. But that's just a note in the suggested motion.
A particular TIF fund? The capital improvement TIF fund?
It should be the Economic Development TIF Fund, the omnibus TIF.
The funds that were previously allocated.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the contract with Barry Dunn in the amount of $44,450 for the development of a one, five, and 10-year capital improvement plan to be funded through the Economic Development TIF.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion from council? Seeing none? Those in favor? Opposed? Question carried? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sarah. Counselor, Agenda Item fourteen, Council Order Number zero seven two five zero three, request of the city manager to award and contract for consulting services for the ordinance rewrite.
Thank you, Counselor Lyons. So this one's similar to the last item, something we discussed earlier in the budget process. We decided, hey, there's some items out of TIF funding, which doesn't have to be tied to the budget process that we want to move forward with from our comp plan. That, right away, one of those was the capital improvement planning process. Another one was fifty thousand for the ordinance changes. That's really as a product of the comprehensive plan, the business attraction plan, the housing needs assessment. All of these have some level of ordinance change to make our ordinance more streamlined, more business-friendly. Some of them are as easy as changing the parking requirements. Some of them in height requirements of buildings potentially. A lot of them are much more in the weeds and require kind of legal reviews, a lot more external knowledge that's beyond staff's current capacity. So, but also a big priority for me in this organization, let's get some of these things off the comp plan. Let's have a show that we're a business-friendly city. That's really modernizing our ordinances. There've been plenty of rewrites of the ordinances to streamline business activity. I think we're already seeing a lot more growth, but this will really kind of help businesses come in here and really see that we've modernized our ordinance structure. I know there's other pieces that might be on the other side. I know John, we've been curious for like a water ordinance redevelopment. That could be considered as part of this, so I think that might be more in the Phase Two potential for this as well. The Phase One is really to kind of meet the timeline of deliverable, to have by the December council meeting is what I wanted on there, which is why when you have a consultant too and you can, that has the space to kind of work on these projects as opposed to, you know, being in just the staff orbit, you know, we can really narrow focus on what's in the comp plan, these other pieces that are kind of the lower hanging fruit. To get the full comprehensive rewrite, some of these other pieces, really hoping for, that's going to take potentially Phase Two. And if we like this consultant, we can move, move forward with that into Phase Two and maybe consider more broad things. But there's also built into this contract council engagement on the ordinance. It's not like, you know, we're going to go out and then come back to you in December and say, hey, yes or no, there is built into this process. Do you want to include the water type reordances? What's reasonable? Here's, here's the changes that we've seen out of the comp plan, the business attraction plan, the housing needs assessment that we think will get the biggest bang for our buck by December. So that was sort of the impetus for this and how the work will move forward. But we received one bidder within the price range, or one bidder at all, but part of it might have been driven by a price range for this. It was the Musson Group and really liked their bid. And it's within the cost estimates. Looks like the, one of the, the senior project account leads will be a former planner, Matt Williams, which would be great to work with him as well, kind of like similar to Barry Dunn, has a lot of knowledges of our ordinances and areas as well. So very confident to move forward with the Musson Group with the, with this bid and start getting the ordinance rewritten to be as business-friendly and streamlined as possible.
All right. Any questions, comments from councillors? Counselor Moat?
Did we send it out to a bunch of different organizations? We just advertised it in the newspaper?
I think it was to advertise in the newspaper and placed in the, yeah, on the website for organizations to go through. We, we didn't do a ton of additional outreach at the same time when we received their proposals at the end. And this one is excellent. We know the group, they're within budget. It'll get us to this kind of quick ordinance, and it's a Phase One. So we don't have to move forward with anybody else post-December. I'm very confident we're going to get to a good place and maybe want to move forward. But if we didn't have a great bidder in here, I might look for more. But this is a good bid within budget and gets us to our timelines for, you know, I think a much overdue and needed rewrite here, but that's kind of where we're at.
I've worked with the Musson Group before in other areas and they do good work. And, you know, they're local and they understand, like Matt being part of it. But, you know, Noel lives in the island and they have a good feel for Hancock County. Any other comments from council, questions? Steve, is that a hand up or a pen?
No, if you want me to bitch about something, I will though.
Well, do I get, I get a choice, you say? I will decline that offer, Steve.
Okay.
And thank you. If hearing no other comments from council, how would the council like to proceed?
This is also from the Ekandev.
Correct.
Can you hook it up, John?
Yeah. Mr. Interim Chair, I'd like to move to approve the city's contract with the Musson Group in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for Phase One of the ordinance rewrite to be funded from the Economic Development TIF.
I'll second with a brief comment. I just, so I seconded, support it. I want to point out in the first paragraph of the background in the memo, I think it's important just to say that we're going to be looking at the 2024 Conference of Plan, the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy and Business Attraction Plans, and that these plans call for specific ordinance changes to support housing development, economic growth, and sustainability. So it's a very broad look at how we update our ordinances to reflect those priorities that have been established in plans that we've invested a whole lot of money and volunteer and staff time in. So I support the pending motion.
Any other discussion from council? Is this a public also discussion? It is not. We're, we're on to the council vote. Any other discussion from council? Yeah, we'll follow up, but I think we're, we'll keep the meeting moving. Hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
You can hold your hand up longer.
Onto item fifteen, Council Order and Public Hearing, Number zero seven two five zero four, public hearing in action on the request of the city manager to approve a three-year contract with Street Scan to inventory assess the condition of all city streets. This request is to approve year two and three of the amount, in the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three. Year run was approved up to twenty-five thousand at the council, June council meeting.
Assistant City Manager, Devlin?
Hi, Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager.
Deputy, sorry.
That's okay.
Didn't want to give you a demotion.
This is back on this agenda due to an error in the public hearing posting last council meeting. We only posted it for the one year of up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's a three-year contract. So the total contract amount is the sixty-eight, nine sixty. So we approved the first year. So Street Scan has been working on the GIS mapping to get ready to come out and drive the cars and the scooters on the sidewalk. But now we're just asking to approve the additional three years, additional two years, pardon me, contract.
And that's, and that additional amount is for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three?
Yes.
City Manager?
And there's sufficient funds here in the Local Roads capital account for these pieces. And that might need to be specified in the suggested motion out of the Local Roads capital account.
Any other councillor questions or comments before we go to public hearing?
I just want to remind everybody, when we first heard it, it sounded like a great idea to me because for as long as I've been on the council, three years, we've just been kind of playing whack-a-mole with roads. Just this one's terrible or this one is getting the most complaints. Let's look at it, hopefully we can afford it. We've gotten really good with the budgeting process. The only thing that remains is to get good with the inventorying and sort of triage process. And it will save us a lot of time in future discussions, not having to go back and forth, what really needs to be done, have we seen this, what are we talking about? You know, we cross-reference the technology that'll tell us these ones are really in worse repair and then decisions are, you know, made much more easily that way with good data.
Ties right back into the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, I should note, to your point, John, just for folks that didn't get it on background, I might be hearing or listening this for the first time. It's kind of like one of those Google LiDAR cars that will, you know, scan every bit of road. We're also doing state roads that we have. So we also have an assessment of the condition that state roads that come through us that you're in. So we have the data we might need to say, hey, state, this, you have this as a priority X. We think it should be more because Bayside is one of those that we really feel is in a condition that needs to be changed. We don't want to spend city dollars on that road. We want the state to spend dollars on that, so let's have the data to back these up. But, and then the sidewalks is something, and then Counselor Smith or others, we added that as kind of part of scope too. But following this, you know, we'll really have kind of a benchmark for what we're going to need to move forward. And that system has, you know, you can plug in, we want to spend fiscally responsible. We think we can carry as additional debt, seven hundred and fifty thousand. What could we do to, with that seven hundred and fifty thousand best in this data with these roads? And the system will help us kind of make those determinations. So having a full assessment of our roads will be, in a, in a very data-driven way, can almost make a lot of these decisions algorithmic, like here's, and, and not just for, you know, let's repave, but maybe we reclaim, maybe it's a skinny mix over the top. Here's the condition here, you, you give a skinny mix here. Now to this one, you can avoid a full reclaim in four or five years to, you know, really start giving to data. We have so many roads like this, just as our infrastructure plan needs to be pretty front and center.
I believe it was asked at the last council meeting about trails and if they do any sort of scanning of trails. And they don't offer that service right now, but they are looking at how to add that to their portfolio. So depending on how, how this contract goes and as we develop our trails out at Branch Lake Public Forest and things like that, that might be an additional thing we add on later on.
Any other questions from the council before I go to a public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion.
Counselor Moat?
Move to approve the request of the city manager to approve year two and three in the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars of a three-year contract with Street Scan. Inventory assess the condition of our, of all city streets to be funded from the Local Roads capital improvement fund.
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion from council? Counselor Halloran?
Could we clarify the total amount of the three-year contract?
Yes, sorry. Sorry, I have to get back to it.
Sixty-eight, nine sixty.
Right, I saw that here. I'd like it on the record.
Sixty-eight, nine hundred and sixty. Sixty-eight thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty.
So what you're really saying, if I'm wrong here, is, is what's on the table is voting for forty-three and change twice?
Forty-three and change twice.
You're asking for forty-three in this, in the?
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, forty-five. How, how does the math work out when you've got?
Twenty-five already in.
Twenty-five in, and now you're asking for forty-five?
It was up to twenty-five. That's how the public hearing notice was noticed for the last meeting. So it was up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but the total contract amount is sixty-eight, nine sixty.
Right, but this, number fifteen says the request is to approve year two and three in the amounts of forty-five thousand, nine seventy-three. Could we clear for the record, are we, are we approving that twice or once?
Once.
Thank you.
So that's for two years?
That's for the two years, yes. You already proved the previous.
In total, it's for sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty. Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, we have a motion and second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Lady Sarah? Item, Agenda Item sixteen, Council Order Number zero seven two five zero five, update from the city manager on the new Courthouse Road.
Thank you, Counselor Lyons. So just want to give you all a quick update on the Courthouse Road project. We, we have finalized per previous council authorization the land purchase of the Adams parcel for seventy-five thousand and the Adams parcel in Ellsworth. Oh, sorry, seventy-five, sorry, thirty thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve, sorry. I don't know why it's that.
Did that come with a ride to the ER or what?
I'm going to throw these little.
That was your free stress test.
See, you can automatically trigger when, thirty thousand. To your point, Steve, I had a similar one. I saw a thirty thousand bill for the legal work. I was like, how did we, and I was like, oh, that was for this piece. And I have an inclusion of the Q-two budget update. I did a Q-one at a finance committee meeting recently on kind of pre-site work prep costs. I've done a Q-two budgeting update on, now that we've purchased the Adams parcel for thirty thousand, as previously discussed in council, we actually, I think, had up to two hundred and five thousand in that, that discussion. The other parcel is the one for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which will, is the Merrill parcel. We're, you know, we're in contract for that. There's no issues with the closing. It's, the main piece is a kind of a legal issue of within the land that we're, that we're purchasing. There is a lease and there's a clause about how the lease is worked out, if it becomes a public way with, with two of the individuals there. So their lawyers are kind of ironing out how that final agreement will work. We expect that either this week or next to have that, that piece ready. And it should be at the, as previously discussed, price. The, so that's kind of the update there. Like all things, we kind of try to produce these memos and information for you all with the weekend to look at it. Sometimes the information changes. So I also recently received feedback from the main judiciary on our road design. And Nate, I don't know if you can bring up, I just kind of emailed you, the, the full blow-up of the road design, but our, that document, correct. We're just trying to see if we can have the citizens see it as well. But we have the initial per the developer agreement with the, with the judiciary to move forward in this process. They've done a full land swap with the, with the Wardwells for the, the former Surrey Road location for the courthouse. So now that's, that's also been finalized. The judiciary owns outright, and that's closed, the seventeen-point-nine acre Wardwell property. And the, the, the Wardwells now own the Surrey property. But as also part of that developer agreement, we're timelines that we needed to met, meet in order for the judiciary to move forward so that they can meet their construction timelines. One was to have by July first, the initial construction design put together, which we did with the stormwater plan. This would be essentially what we need to submit to the Department of Environmental Protection. So we submitted that about a week before the July first deadline with great Andrew McCullough Engineering. I know you all authorized that at a previous meeting, but great local engineering firm. Did incredibly quick, but excellent job on the road design. And stormwater and initial layout for what we need to go to the DEP. That's gone to the judiciary. They've given us back comments. It's now, originally we were expecting that we would have to do kind of a common scheme of development moving forward and trying to keep the whole project under five acres to be in a NERPA classification, which is like a hundred and twenty-day potential review, I think, as opposed to a much longer SLOTA review. So we really try to keep to those impermeable surface, less than five acres pieces. But the, one of the potential good news of the comments is the, the state's consultants and engineers think that potentially the DEP would really consider these two separate projects, which they are. This, this road is, the courthouse will be one piece, but there's going to be a fair amount of other development opened up in the Adams parcel, in the Merrill parcel, now that it would have a road and water and sewer access as well as potential rail trail access to the, and public parking in, in this area and then, and beyond. So if we can move forward, we're going to look towards kind of refining our plans a bit. And if we, then it could be a permit by rule, which would, really the kind of key designation here is time and cost. So staying within a permit by rule, if we can get approved by this fall, then we can build that construction road, which is also in the developer agreement by the agreed upon timelines much quicker. And in a timeframe, you know, if our public works teams in March, April, May, June, when they're opening up, when you have all the rain, when they're filling the potholes, those are our busiest times. And it's part of the variability of this process is we, there's been lots of delays that we've been told about the DEP. And if the delay of submitting a NERPA would push us into that timeframe, we'd have to contract out for the construction road access to be built. So this, hopefully, we'll have some more updates in the next couple of weeks that it'll keep us in a permit by rule category. And then I'll have an updated construction timeline. Also, an updated construction timeline. Also, in the finalization developer agreement, we worked with the judiciary really to solely focus on Merrill Lane as opposed to, there was another initial idea that we'd come through Long Lane with the construction road. So we'll no longer have to build that. There should be some cost savings. The road's more narrow. There should be some cost savings there. But now that we have, are getting closer to final road design, I'll also do like a much more detailed updated cost on what we think it would be to do it in-house versus externally, probably at our next Q3 budget update on this. I also want to talk to a local contractor, a couple of them who I've had some initial conversations with, you know, drilling and blasting will be kind of one of our biggest ones in terms of now that we have the final design of what will be needed in our construction road area. It seems like the courthouse's piece has the most of that. Our construction road won't have too much of that, but we want to finalize that. That could be kind of the budget buster. It often is in these categories. But we have a lot of the materials, culverts, fill already at the highway department. So next update I have on this for Q3, I'll probably have a little bit more of a forward-looking. This is our latest estimation on costs and timelines. So that's pretty much it for me, but happy to take additional questions. I don't know if... Sorry to the public out there. It is available in the packets online if you'd like to look at the most current development.
Page thirty-nine for those in online of the packet. Well, while Ebony's maybe getting that up, any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Smith?
I'm just going to make a point about the map she's trying to bring up. I couldn't read it in our packet, but if you go to the website and just search on courthouse, you'll find the page that was created for the courthouse, and the map is very legible there. So if people are looking for it for more information, just go to the website. And for the page with the courthouse, it'll be, you can actually read. I thought it was my eyes, but no, it just, it really is better on the website.
There we go. Yeah, and that, your great point, you almost need to like zoom in. And I've had a couple of meetings with our engineer to explain these different pieces. Those big, like, if you could zoom in.
If you zoom in in the document or packet, you can't read things, but it's great.
Maybe go down a little bit. Perfect. Keep going down a bit. Keep going down. Great. And then go over just to the right a bit.
So she's driving around.
So these general, like, purple outlines are the right-of-way, are the tenant purchase right-of-way, sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Again, we're, there actually isn't a design standards for when the city to build a road isn't here. We have private design standards, but we're just going to stick, we're going to call what we would expect a private developer to build a road, a commercial mixed-use retail type road. We're going to stick to those private standards is what we'd expect the city to abide by as well, sixty-six-foot right-of-way. We won't need all of that. This kind of green is the current configuration of the road. The state's promised to do a, fund a traffic engineering study as part of their process. So we'll, again, this is initial configuration. It could change upon final traffic configuration, but we don't anticipate the amount of trips from the courthouse really triggering too much. It's already at a traffic light, I think, in initial conversations with Chair Beal and the other counselors. That was one of the reasons we felt we had to go through Merrill as opposed to Long Lane, was we're going to need to be on a traffic light for this project to work. And thanks to the Merrills and the Adams and the Wardwells for really coming together and, you know, it's a very intricate process, but to be amenable to this piece so that we could kind of start building the future of Ellsworth here with the courthouse anchored in the Cart Brook area as an anchor piece for this. Sidewalk areas are kind of in the blue down to this piece, and then it kind of could connect to the Key Bank area. We'll keep in mind that connection as we're moving forward. These kind of circle areas are for stormwater management. They essentially are called swales. In the initial term, we'll consider them like, you know, you just grasp them in. But I think, you know, as we look towards this, that's the cheapest option. That's what I'll need to stick to. And I know, Mr. Workman, that's what you'd let me stay in, and I promised to be there. But, you know, I've had conversations with others about how can we also maybe use those swales, maybe do some fundraising, maybe work for some other groups about how we consider multimodal access for this area and making sure that this road fits in the character of Ellsworth, but in a way that's budget responsible. So this is, this isn't the final design. There will probably be a landscaping design of how this works as well. And if you keep going up Ebony to the top area where it meets the courthouse. So we're able to fortunately keep almost all of the store, or all of the stormwater on to the parcels that the city has owned, or a little bit on where the state judiciary's parcels land, which they're somewhat amenable to. So, you know, they don't need all seventeen-point-nine acres of this area for their courthouse. They only need a bit of it for, I think, about around three acres for their piece, which is, this is where the proposed courthouse would be. And now that we're in the kind of final stage here, we're looking at kind of final design, too. And there may be a little bit of like, how do you access the courthouse? And then, you know, turn around, and the future, that road can continue on into other portions of that parcel that would be out in our urban core, accessible to our public water and sewer. I think in initial discussions that we had on this process, that's one of the reasons we decided to move forward with this, our comp plan, the housing needs assessment, that we need to start building in our urban core more. But right now, you'll just see a lot of sprawl on the Surrey Road, the Bucksport Road, on areas that are just directly on those main roads, even if they're not on our water, even if they're not on our sewer. So how do we encourage development in our urban core with access to the downtown? This could also potentially, I'm talking to the Wardwells further on Thursday, but they have offered potential rights of first refusal on their entire hundred-and-forty-acre parcel, which they've acquired about probably almost two years ago now, that they really are hoping will be designed for the best use of Ellsworth. Could include potential rail trail access, a public parking on the rail trail. I'm also meeting with the ATV clubs that really want to make Ellsworth more of a central destination for rail trail activity in same ways Callis and Eastport have done. Also have talked to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy on kind of the recreational opportunities they see here potentially in the future and connecting a lot of the trail work they've been doing on Riverwalk North, Riverwalk South. You know, there's also bigger dreams on connecting High Street to Main Street, crossing that rail trail to kind of have a, you know, a mini bypass essentially that could open up additional land parcels there. So a big project, I think, that'll be pretty essential to our economic development, housing development, recreational development over the next five years. Seen some good signs that we're staying on time and on budget thus far. But as always, I'll keep the council informed if there's any hiccups and feel free to take any, ask any questions you have.
Any questions from the council or city manager? Seeing none, any questions from the public on this matter?
I go with Workman, resident of Ellsworth. You didn't bring up about the LD seven thirty-nine.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So basically, Representative White and Senator Grahowski went up in front to get a bill passed, and it's in appropriations right now, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand reimbursement to the city of Ellsworth for the access road. But there's a certain timeline on those funds, if it goes to appropriation for availability. So you got to look at that timeline. But, and also, I'm working, trying to get an agenda item at the commissioners for additional funding. And that's like pulling teeth.
Let us know how the city can support you with that.
Yeah, well, that'd be nice. All right, thank you.
That's an excellent point, Gordon. I should also note, thank you to Senator Grahowski and Representative White. Actually, three minutes before this meeting, I was meeting with Senator Grahowski, and she mentioned just that thing, Gordon, on, I can't remember, LD...
LD seven thirty-nine.
LD seven thirty-nine and how it still is in appropriations. You know, we brought it over to the judiciary. They brought it back out to Senate appropriations. So we're still looking at that angle. Also, our economic development director, Twyla, will be looking at the TIF districts. This would be, I think, a good candidate. We're at about two-point-five percent of total land mass in a TIF district thus far. So we have some room to grow here. I think this would be an excellent candidate for a future TIF district to capture some of the likely valuation increase, but maybe sequester that for additional housing incentives that we can really focus on placemaking and, you know, some of the big priorities of the comp plans in this council, which you previously mentioned, Nancy, on the ordinance rewrite, on housing affordability and economic development. And to me, there's a, there is a big anchor in all of these pieces in this parcel and kind of the future of Ellsworth here.
Yeah, and to that point, there's a lot of themes and matters tying together tonight's meeting. But for this, the ordinance rewrite, looking at this property, the full scale of it, and making sure that we're being proactive in zoning it so we can have this type of development there and incentives and everything we can do to support folks going in there and developing it. Councilor Smith?
I just want to add a little bit of context for LD seven thirty-nine. Looking it up on the state website, all bills that were on the appropriations table that were not funded in the last session were carried over to the next session. So rather than kill them, they're at least alive for another shot. But the likely won't be taken up until January of twenty twenty-six, when the legislature comes back in. Highly competitive things that are on the, I don't know what the ratio is. It was something like a hundred million dollars worth of asks for fifteen million dollars worth of available money. That's kind of what we're dealing with. That was before some of the federal legislation that's come forward that has put more weight on people looking to state government to fill some of the gaps with healthcare and such. So it's alive. It's sitting with many other bills in the appropriations committee to be picked up likely in, well, by the end of next session, which would be April. So that's the timeline when that might come in. But it's highly competitive on the state budget. So just offering that perspective as we're bringing this into the conversation.
Great.
It's there, but...
All we can do is try.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was well worth it, as I said. Charlie and I testified in the paper.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
It's there.
Yeah, and we've talked about potential, once you have final road design and traffic studies, main DOT is potential MPI for an intersection upgrade. They probably can't do too much in the road itself going in, but at the intersection, that might be a potential. There's also kind of a utilities fee that could be part of this proposal, too, as if developers are going into this area and just plugging, playing into this, our infrastructure that we're building in through here, that could recoup some of the costs as well. So we'll continue to look at all angles, including private donations, partnerships with the nonprofits. And to your point, Nancy, too, on, one of the reasons we'd like to elevate the planning role into planning and urban development, too, is exactly this piece, is bringing in people who have some expertise here on doing this the right way. So, you know, so that this can be matched with the rest of our plans in a way that's in character with Ellsworth and is zoned appropriately and, you know, is bringing in groups that can do this type of work. I know it's kind of part of the growth phase of Ellsworth is, there's, we talked in the housing needs assessment, you know, there's a lot of towns that kind of things come through the planning board, and that's the process. It's just what comes through the planning board is what comes through. And there's other cities usually that kind of reach a growth inflection point where, you know, you really have to take a more proactive approach to, hey, this, where is all this stuff happening? Where is it in the right places? Are we zoning, limiting growth where we could be growing more in certain areas? Is our, you know, can we help make this easier for developers to come in here and say, I'm not going to take a year to come through this planning board on this process. I know for this type of housing activity, there could be this credit enhancement agreement available. And, you know, I'm going to have the certainty as a developer to be able to come to the city of Ellsworth, get through the planning process quickly because it's in line with all these other plans. And at the end of line, help people afford a home here in Ellsworth and have a property that they can kind of live in quicker. That's not a quick turnaround by any stretch, but unlike at the national level, this isn't just Ellsworth who's dealing with this, the state of Maine's dealing with this. But at the local level, we really do have a lot of tools in our toolkit to help foster some housing growth, to help people not just visit here, but live here year-round, go to schools, frequent our businesses, do some mixed-use retails developments so that we're spurring smart growth.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, thanks for your leadership on that, in that manner. A lot has been accomplished. Lot to come, though.
Lot to come.
Okay, I think we've addressed that. How's the council doing? Need five or do we want to keep pressing? Good? All right. Some rugged individuals here. Okay, council number, or agenda number seventeen, council order zero seven two five zero six, public hearing and action on amendments to the city of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty-four, personnel ordinance. We have our human resources manager here.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Carrie Taylor, HR manager. So we are here to talk about consideration and approval of proposed amendments to the city's personnel ordinance. These updates reflect an important shift towards a performance-driven approach to employee compensation and professional development. With the passing of the FY twenty-six budget, we switched from the traditional annual cost of living raises that were provided every year to a performance-based system. So we need to update the ordinance to reflect that. Currently, the ordinance references a merit increase system of every three years. So we need to update annually to reflect the new performance-based pay system. The second thing, the tuition reimbursement is currently is just kind of some updates to that to create a more formalized system. Employees would have to submit an application to be reviewed by their department manager and the city manager, kind of justify why they want to take some specialized training or degree programs that are relevant to their role here. They would have to abide by certain criteria, meet certain thresholds for their performance evaluations each year to be considered for that program. Currently, we currently have a program, but it doesn't have some of the stipulations that we're hoping to add to it to kind of build upon that performance-based performance system that we're trying to roll with, so.
I have just a couple notes on the, a lot of this is kind of cleanup. Carrie's our rule knower and reformer extraordinaire. She did a big piece on this, previous on some personnel updates. Thank you so much, Carrie, for this hard work. We passed some things in the budget, went to the performance-based merit pay, performance review process. We've worked really hard over the last year. It seems as though for the, you know, past years or so, even though it's in the ordinance currently, that it's merit pay every three years for eligibility, that the city had kind of gone towards a just general COLA across the board, even though that's not in the ordinances to give COLAs, that only increases in pay should be due towards merit every three years. You know, I think it's kind of relative to the capital improvement planning pieces. That's the easiest way just to move it forward. To implement a performance review process, to actually stick within the merit pay system is much more difficult, but especially if it's every three years and it's not baked into your kind of yearly review process, I think, you know, it's kind of likely to fall by the wayside. So I know council approved some additional funding as we switched towards a merit-based system, and this will clean up the ordinance as well so that we can have a yearly review process and apply merit pay accordingly. And then the second piece on the training, yeah, it really is, I looked at the way it is in the ordinance. It's not specific. I'd like to have a much more, have an application process. Your department has to approve. The city manager approves it. It's in line with the city needs, you know, as opposed to kind of just people were going individually to Carrie and, does this count? Does this not? So this kind of cleans up that process a bit. So we did pass that in the budget and had some discussion on some degree opportunities for our deputy finance director to start pursuing an accounting degree in exchange for years of service. Years of service in finance is obviously extremely valuable. We've had a ton of turnover there. Accounting best practices is as well. So it's a good deal for the city, a good deal for this employee. And I think in an ideal world, that's attracting the best talent here to know that we'll take care of them. And maybe that person will stay here for fifteen years or twenty years, like Tina, or maybe they've given us great service, upgraded our finance department immeasurably, and we can wish them the best on their next endeavor knowing that they came to the city of Ellsworth and we helped them achieve their next life goal. So that's kind of some of the background behind the two changes. their next life goal. So that's kind of some of the background behind the two changes.
Thank you, Charlie.
This is a public hearing. So any questions from the council before we go to a public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone, members of the public, like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion?
Move to adopt amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34 Personnel Ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Carrie. Agenda number 18, council order 072507, update from the library director on library building renovations.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Sarah Lesko, library. So I'll give you a very brief update. I know the paperwork I provided was not brief, but you can read all the details there. And this is really just letting you know what we've been doing. We have completed the building assessment last fall and the concept design that we worked on through the winter. So we are at the stage where we need to have an architect officially onboard. We need plans. We need blueprints in order to apply for a number of grants. So we're missing out on opportunities. We just missed Revitalize Me because we do not have blueprints. So we need to hit our, our next stage of this project by releasing an RFP and getting an architect onboard. And this is, I'm not coming to request funds. We have funding from our amazingly wonderful Kemp Trust. Thank you to Jimmy Kemp and the Kemp family for giving us this beautiful gift that's letting us move forward. So we'll be, yeah, signing an architect on. Did you all have any questions about anything that I've sent you? I know it was a lot of stuff.
You are a librarian, so there's a lot of...
How many pages? Like 100? I don't know. Yeah, but we're thinking that this, this RFP, we will make the, the plans for the first two phases of the work with the possibility of adding in that third phase, depending on a capital campaign or not.
Any questions for the library director from the council? Any questions from the public? I don't have any. Oh, we have a question. Counselor Stein.
Are there any upcoming library events that you would recommend the counselors attend? And if so, while we're there?
I just like instantly started sweating. We have, I don't even know, I don't know how many programs we're doing a week.
It's lots.
Three a day, maybe? We have, our big adult program this week is our murder mystery party. That's on Thursday. We, check our calendar. There's too many to name. Tess Garrettson's our big author coming this summer, so people are really excited to get to meet her in person. But yeah, look at the calendar.
And the summer reading program for our little ones.
So many kids are signing up. We're doing Reading Dragons, so they're reading to earn their player cards in addition to some prizes. Adults can also still sign up. We have three different gifts that people can enter drawings for, for adults and teens.
Can we win player cards too, though?
You know what? We actually do have some adults signed up for Reading Dragons because they want the adorable dragon cards. And all of the cards are made by volunteers. We have 21 active volunteers right now at the library. So way to go, library volunteers, wherever you are out there, we love you.
Yeah, and I just, I very, I love the vision on the, on what you guys are trying to do. I'm excited to see as the plans come forward. And I know there's a lot, we need to raise a lot of money, but this is, library is critical to our community. So I look forward to working with you on this.
Thanks, Patrick. Councilor lines. Yeah, thank you all. And yeah, follow the website renovation page. All the information's on there. Yeah, lots going on.
Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think you might be back up. Agenda number 19, council order 072508, discussion on a charter amendment to increase the library trustees from five to seven members.
Hello, everyone. Lauren Perez, library trustee. I believe you all got the letter from Craig, our chair. It is pretty straightforward. We are looking to increase from five to seven. And we would like to get a sponsor to amend the charter to that.
For the public that's here or listening, could you provide a little bit of why you guys are, just summarize why you think we need two more trustees?
There are a number of reasons. The biggest is just to, to be able to cover a lot more ground. We feel that two more seats would allow us to do that. As you all know, we are in the process of this expansion project. And as Sarah mentioned, all of the programs going on. We do have a lot of volunteers, which are wonderful, but we would like to have more support on the board level. That is the biggest reason. We have some other reasons, which are just, you know, it would be wonderful to have some new perspectives, different backgrounds, different expertise to the table. But at the end of the day, it is about having a few more people to do the work.
Great. Makes sense. Question, now, maybe Counselor Mo would know, as far as, this is the city's charter or the library's charter?
City charter.
Okay. And what is required for us to amend the charter?
I believe we need something on an agenda to put it on the November election to change the charter.
Yeah, I think it's, so, I mean, you're just here to say, hey, can we start this process?
Yes, yeah. Schedule a public hearing, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I do as well.
I don't, do we need to vote on whether or not we proceed? I guess we would want to have a vote.
I don't think we need to vote tonight. I think they will come back.
No, so we had consulted John Hamer, and he said we needed to come and request the sponsorship of the amendment and a public hearing before it can be put on the ballot.
And by, did John clarify what he meant by sponsorship? Are you looking for a vote from us or just?
He did not clarify that. Just that we were coming to request a sponsorship.
Does tonight not count? Yes, no, that was tonight. And then, and then we have to decide on a date for a public hearing.
So I suppose if we can just, if we put it to a public hearing, I would imagine that sponsoring the matter and advancing it and then getting it on. I see no reason why we shouldn't put this to the voters.
These are volunteer positions. They are not paid.
Yeah, yeah, no.
We're not costing anyone.
No, I was just trying to make sure, yeah, we're just, make sure we do it right.
Yes.
So we can get those volunteers there. So I think we'd want to get it to a public hearing at some point.
Is that going to affect the taking out papers?
We weren't looking to do it for this fall. Not looking for next year.
Tina would, yes.
Yeah.
The murdering.
Yeah, that's not, so yeah, that's sort of, we're starting this now. Yeah, our timeline is for next fall.
I love you, I love you all. I won't do that.
Well, then I think it's a matter of working with city staff to get it on, you know, make sure we're following the proper procedure and advancing it so we can have it on the November ballot, which we need to have ready 60 days in advance. So we probably want to start moving and shaking.
So we'll talk up and then get it together?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I think, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Great. Onto agenda item 20, council order 072509, request of the public works director to accept the quote for salt sand.
Good evening, Mike Harris, Public Works Director. So every year, we, we have to buy salt for the roads in the wintertime. And so typically, the, there's a consortium that goes out to bid for statewide, which they did. And they came back to us with, New England Salt won the bid for the statewide consortium, and they came in with their bid price. Issue we ran into is, the last time we got salt from New England Salt, it was not very good. There was a lot of big chunks in it. It didn't break up well. It was too fine. Didn't work well on the roads. So the company that we did have really good luck with, Eastern Salt, we reached out to them to see if they would match the low bid, and they said they would. And so we're requesting that we be able to go with Eastern Salt and not the statewide consortium, a low bid price.
Great. Any questions from the council? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. This looks good. Just how does this compare to what we budgeted and how does it compare to last year's figures? I like what you were able to do to leverage the state to get the vendor you want.
I'd have to go back and look. I didn't bring that with me. So that is my, my fault. I can't give you that answer.
Counselor Halloran?
I'm troubled by this. And maybe it's my perception that is wrong. But if you went to bid through the state consortium, okay, and you didn't like the perceived winner through the state consortium, if that's the correct term, maybe you could explain the state consortium process for the public.
So the state will take, so a certain amount of salt is allocated for each town that they need for their winner. Salt quantity, ours, I think, was 2,900 if you look at the chart. And so they take everybody's quantity, and then they take that mass quantity and they, they ask for bulk pricing from the salt companies, and they get a price back from the salt company. And then they ask the people that are in the, that are in the consortium that they represented, if they want to take that bid price or they don't want to take that bid price. Or if they want to go with that company, they don't want to go with that company. And so due to the previous issues with that particular company, he said if we could get it from the company that provided better service, because there's only two, I believe, that do this, then we'd prefer to have the better quality product on our roads. And so we reached out, they agreed to match the low bid price for Ellsworth, and so that's what I bring to you.
So there's really only two companies in the state that do this?
Pretty much.
I don't buy that. I can't believe that there's only two companies to buy salt from. And why would we put it out to the state's consortium and then select one guy and call him and ask him to match the state's price? That just does not sit well with this board.
Yeah, no, it's fine. We didn't put it out to the state's consortium. They asked us if we wanted to participate in the state consortium and give them a number, and we did. And it came back. And the person that came back, we have quality issues with. So rather than go with a lower quality product, we decided to see if we could get the same price for a better quality product, and that's what we did. So if you want to go with a lower quality product, we can.
No, what I, my problem is this, is that if you're in the state consortium and you're going to shop their number, why don't you shop, why don't you do the bid yourself as well as the state consortium? Don't be in the state consortium. This thing smells.
I agree with you, Steve. Not that it smells, but I just think that we need to go through a bidding process in order to create their number current policy.
You can't tell me that there's only two salt companies on planet Earth that can bring us salt. And why the hell would we do it this way? This just thing smells.
The situation is such that, this is the first time I've been involved in it. State consortium is something that they've been, that's been done in the past. Brian Moon came to me when he got the pricing back from, and the bidder back from the state consortium, and said that they didn't have good luck with that product the last time they used that company. And so asked if he could request Eastern Salt to match the bid. He did, and they did. And so that's why I brought it to you.
And I guess I can offer, you know, this seemed pretty straightforward to me. The state consortium had their price. We didn't like the vendor that's, that had bad quality issues with it. The vendor that we have been using in the past can match the price. But I take for note your issues on process and ensuring that there's other, other people that could have bid on this, that we put it out ourselves to bid. We have a price from the state consortium, that's not changing.
I would say the same thing happened last year with the sand. So we went out to bid on the sand, but we didn't because Ken Dugas offered to match the price from the previous year. And you guys told us we could stay with Ken Dugas for screen sand.
So for clarification, when the state bid process come back, do you, did you get more numbers than just from one low contractor? Was it four or five in this packet that comes back from the state that you could have reached out to?
They sent me what you see there, which is the chart and how much the low bid price came in at.
So you don't know what the other bids were?
I have no idea.
Can we find out?
I could try, yeah.
This, this whole thing smells. I don't like it.
I'm happy that, you know, again, it could be that we can't lock, would we not be able to lock in the price with the state or this other vendor? Is there a potential that we could have to pay more on both fronts if we put it fully out to bid?
Yeah.
Would it be likely that we'll just have more data and information and we can find other vendors to?
When do we need to have this, when do we want this locked down?
Well, I mean, we prefer to have it locked down in the fall, well before winter starts, so we can have deliveries brought up and stockpiled. And, you know, we know we're in good shape going into winter because you never know when winter's going to really start, right? Sometimes it could start in Thanksgiving. Sometimes it could start in the middle of the summer. We just like to know that we have what we need on hand before bad weather hits us so we can proceed accordingly and make sure the road's good.
Would you be able to put it out to bid and have responses by August, by the August meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if that's what you guys want, then we will look at putting it out to bid. The only issue would be, what if we, we'll put it out to bid, but I don't know what we're going to get back for bid, bid prices. We'll research and see if there's other people we can send it to.
Yeah, I mean, for the record, I don't have a huge issue with the way you proceeded because you went through with the state and then you got another vendor to match it. But considering the timing here?
Yeah, that's what worries me.
You know, but if we can have something locked in by August?
Yeah.
And you can blame the council when you go back to Eastern Sand and say they were giving us a hard time. And hopefully we don't lose that, but...
No, I mean, just trying to work in the best interest of Ellsworth, and it didn't work out this time.
Let me, let me ask, when you reach out to, I mean, you've got the price from the state.
Yep.
So someone reaches out to Eastern Salt. Am I missing, I'm probably missing a lot here, but why would you call up someone and ask them to match it? Why wouldn't you ask what their price is?
I didn't have the conversation with them, so I can't tell you that answer.
Why would anyone do that? I don't get it. If you're going to call up and ask for a price, why would you give the, the cards on the table? I don't get that.
I mean, my, and I'll verify this, but my thought process is that Eastern, Eastern Salt may not have even bid on the state. So I'll have to find out because they may have had problems with that quantity of production. So maybe that's why they're willing to do an individual bid, you know, an individual price for us rather than having to provide it for the whole state.
Yeah, I'd say it's, I mean, it's, they, they got their state consortium, they're assuming they're getting lowest price there. And hey, we don't like, we haven't had quality issues with this product in the past. Can we see if an organization that does have quality can match this? And then we've got a matched price from, like, we have plenty of vendors that do this kind of sole sourcing. They get best prices, they put it together. That's how you...
I mean, the thought process was if the price came back and they couldn't match it, then we would have just gone with state consortium and came to you for that.
What if the price come back and it was less?
That's the question.
We don't know because they were asked to match it.
I don't know what the conversation with Brian had with him. I don't know if he asked him for a price.
Well, it smells.
Yeah, we get that.
For more info, just some quick research, FY '23 was 78.45 a ton, '24 was 75 a ton. Last year was 71 a ton.
So based on my experience, we kind of never went with the main state consortium because we ended up getting a lower price for our locally than we in the past. I mean, that was about five years ago, but...
Yeah. And like I said, this is my first time through this process, so.
We'll, we'll put it out. And Counselor Smith, your comment too. We'll have better estimation ahead of line with budgets, I think. Just initially, John, with... I think just initially, John, with your math on previous prices, we're probably within budget here, but we'll get you that better information, we'll.
And I think it was a good sign, too, looking at the contract. Again, there's no minimum purchase amount, which gives us flexibility. And if we're $10 a ton below where we were the last couple of years, that's a pretty strong statement. I don't know if it could have been better had the question been asked differently.
Is main consortium, would that also be written as main DOT?
Yeah.
Okay, because that, that's, I have a memo from last year that includes the previous few years.
Yeah.
That I think Adam put in, and it was actually Lisa's memo that he copied initially.
Yeah.
It seems like we've been doing that for a few years now.
Yeah.
Price match.
So, if you're looking at the previous memos, then I assume they must have went out to bid to other people after the main consortium?
I think before, that, that they went to main DOT and it showed us savings of $10,000 over the previous year's costs, is what that last memo said.
All right, I think maybe we, maybe someone wants to move to table this till next month, and we can bring it back?
It's moved.
Second.
There's no discussion when there's a tabling, so.
No discussion on the tabling motion.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining, Steve?
I am, I, I just, this is a mess.
You're a little salty about it?
I am, this is a mess.
And the bad dad humor starts at 8:12.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda number 21, council order 072510. Public hearing in action on the request of the finance director for temporary bond anticipation note, known as BAN, for DWSRF, which I think is the
Drinking water.
Drinking water state revolving fund. Close enough, bond approved borrowing. We have a memo here from our finance director who has appeared magically on the screen.
On the screen?
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Nate Moore, finance director. As Patrick stated, the drinking water state revolving fund loan, back in about 2022, so about three years ago, they started the process for a $4.9 million DWSRF loan. It was all, my understanding that this was complete. However, we found out about a month ago, or a few weeks ago, that the process was not complete, so the loan was not fully executed. This has caused us, we just started the Surry Road Water Main project recently, and we have bills coming in. So, it was brought to the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago that with these bills coming in and not having the DWSRF loan fully executed, we would need to possibly borrow funds, which Chair Beal recommended we look at getting a BAN in the meantime. So, based on the main municipal bond bank, we should see that loan at August meeting. I'm not sure what that timeline would be as far as once it actually is fully executed. But this ban that is brought to you tonight is just to help us with any bills that we get for the Surry Road Water Project in the time being. So, I reached out to five local banks. I heard back from all of them, and in front of you, you'll see that I have, I'm looking to award the bond anticipation note to Machias Savings Bank with a rate of 5.35%. I understand that they're not the lowest on there. With Camden, they are required deposit relationship. At this time, we're not looking to switch banks. So, this would be the lowest one needed, on as needed basis, which is what we're looking for. Any questions?
Councilor Stein?
So, assuming, assuming a, basically a payback of the ban when, when we're expecting the funds to come through, and do you know what the timeline of that is?
Yeah, so, I don't know exactly, and I'm sure Tammy probably knows a little bit more about the DWSRF loans. But once we get that approved, let's just say we draw, I'm just going to use a round number. Let's just say we pull $750,000 from this BAN. We can, once this loan is executed, we can use those funds to pay back the BAN. So, we're not looking to expend these funds for the full 12 months or anything. It's only to get through for the short term. But I do know it will be presented at August, main, main municipal bond bank's meeting.
I'm just, I'm mostly, there's probably no way to know since we're not sure of the entire amount we're going to draw down or how long it's going to take to get the grants in, but the, the total interest we're looking at, basically the what we, we have to pay to wait for these grants to come in. Is there any way to know an estimate of that?
I mean, obviously, the year-round interest, Machias is 108. So, you know, doing the rough math, you're probably looking at around $15,000 if, if we're be, two months, let's just say, worth of borrowing.
Can I just clarify a couple of things? Jim Saffian did let us know that, so the August meeting is August 27th. And once it's approved at that meeting, it takes about two weeks to have access to the loan funding.
Thanks, sir.
So, we could anticipate maybe early to middle of September. So, we're looking about 60 days, so the $15,000 seems, sounds about right. I'll let, you got to calculate it.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Thanks. I didn't have to calculate it for me. So, I rely on Tammy for that.
Which is obviously more than zero if we had done it properly, but it's the situation we're in, and we need to get these folks paid and keep these projects going. Councilor Halloran?
Just a point of that, you're, you're talking about the interest cost. It was going to be interest cost at a lower rate if the bond was in place. So, it's not fair to say that this mistake is going to cost this amount because it's really the, the bridge difference between what you're borrowing it for and what the bond rate would be. So, it's really not a complete accurate number. My, my concern is this. And I touched upon this a little bit before. What is the total amount? Is it 3.1 million the city's on the book for upfront of this project?
This project?
Yes.
I don't have the number in front of me, I'm sorry. Sorry, if I were to make that work.
So, my concern is this. My concern is this, is if you got a three-point, let's say it's a $3 million project. I, I had in mind it was 3.1 the city's portion of that. And maybe I'm off on that. But my concern is this, is that obviously you got a bill for $900,000 bucks in July, okay? I wonder if $2 million is going to be enough to bridge this gap? And does it cost any more to, I look at this as a credit line, if it was in private interest rise, a credit line. Where did the $2 million come from? If we got a $3 million project and we don't know, we're already here in September, and that sounds like it's the rosy picture. Let's say it's October, and you're getting $900,000 requisitions, you're going to go back and have to redo this thing.
Well, I, I will say, I don't have the number in front of me, but I don't think it's $3 million. I want to say the project is in the $2.1 million range. And I could be wrong, but that's the number that I was, that's, that's the number I'm thinking of. But we also, not, in addition to the bond, or the BAN, we, we also have the tax anticipation note. I know that's not what it's meant for, but we also have the ability to pull from those funds as well.
Three million.
Two point, two point nine nine is.
Thank you. So, it's a $3 million deal. My only, and maybe it's, it's, I just wonder if we shouldn't be asking for perhaps the whole amount until we get this situation under control? Because nothing goes as planned. And, or maybe this $2 million, if you, if you do the $2 million, be prepared to do another million because there'll be a snag someplace that could come at us.
Could we consider the move toward the bond anticipation note to a low bid of Machias Bank with a rate of 5.35%? And to increase the BAN amount to $3 million?
The bank, we, we don't have any assurances they're going to do that, and the rates could change drastically depending on the amount.
Well, I, I think on this point, Steve may be right. But we do need this money pretty soon to make sure we pay our vendors. So, I think, I wouldn't want to, I think my two cents is we vote on this tonight. But to your point, if we need to come back and get more, because I don't know, you know, these bids were for this amount.
Right.
So.
Right.
If we need, you know, so, I think it's cautionary tale, Steve, and if we come to that point, then.
A BAN from November and February, did we add some?
That was just for contingency.
Yep, so, but to your point, Steve, maybe we'll look at the August. Let's really look at this plan, look at the timeline and deliver. I could also reach out to Sergeant, when do the payments due for each piece of this? And then we can align those and to, hey, that's, we're not going to be down the road in there four or five months. Or wow, yeah, we could be within a couple of weeks of trying to secure the loan, flip it over to these payments, and we got to come back for another million in BAN at the August meeting.
Let's, let's use this as a starting point, and I think, I think to go with what you said, Steve, if we have to come back next month and then another $1 million BAN, then that's what we'll do.
I understand that, and, and I'm in favor of that because I'm not in favor of going to a contractor that you've awarded a job that you didn't have money to pay for and asking him to hold the bill. I'm, I'm with you. My thing is this, is that if this goes through tonight, and I'm sure it will, I, I think that this Band-Aid is not big enough for the potential problem. And we need to start drilling for that well tomorrow, not wait until we're in another mess like this.
I should note, I'm not asking for a delay, I'm asking for a schedule of when they're expecting each of their dollar figures. I'm not asking them to change that to be shorter, but just if they were already expecting certain amounts of money to come in certain times, and that aligns with the $2 million BAN and the flop over, great. If it doesn't, and we need another million, we'll come back in August to get another million.
Well, the math says this, that if you get a $900,000 requisition, is that fair? Is that what the amount is?
The curve.
Well, it was two fifty, it was, one was 2.50 and one was around 6.40, so it wasn't just one for $900.
Right, okay, but, and, and it's July. So, assume, and, and the project always goes faster in the end. It goes slowest in the beginning, faster in the end. So, my point is this, is, is we need to prepare as a city to cover the whole thing. Maybe we don't have to draw down the money, but make sure that we get in a position to do this because we don't want two embarrassments, one's not.
Fair enough. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Move to your word, the bond anticipation note, low bid to Machias Savings Bank with a rate of 5.35% on an as needed basis.
Second.
Any just further discussion? Councilor Halloran?
I'd like to applaud you again for reaching out to local banks that are in the city of Ellsworth that are contributing to this community to do business with. You're here.
Too many good banks, there's too many good banks in Ellsworth to, to look outside.
And they're big contributors to everything in town.
Absolutely.
All right. Seeing no other comments. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Agenda item 22, council order 02, or 072511. Discussion on transition to a four-day, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. municipal work week.
Thank you, Chair of the Lions, and I know Carrie's going to do the kind of formal presentation. Thank you, Carrie, for kind of picking this up. Just to give folks a little background from, I think it was the last, maybe the council meeting before, where Councilor Halloran, this is kind of a product, really a two-stage product. One is on December 4th, 2023, there was a modification from the Monday through Friday schedule, more of a traditional schedule for city hall hours, and the change in the operations to the current schedule, which is three days a week, Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 5 p.m., Thursday, 8 to 6:30 p.m., Friday, 8 to 12:30 p.m. But there's also a note in the kind of change, which this doesn't necessarily require council approval, doesn't require council approval. It was made that this would be a six-month kind of trial basis and evaluate how things go, and then move forward towards a four-day municipal work week was the sort of expectation. That was the expectation set with staff. There didn't seem to be a whole lot of, councilors can tell me otherwise, of council input and other types of those pieces. But it's one of the things that in the, when Councilor Halloran and I were in the clerks' negotiation, that we talked about this. What there was, there's been some requests to me that they, you know, what's the status of this potential change? The clerks' area would be the, the biggest piece of the city hall operating hours, and we're talking about only city hall operating hours. And I should also note, this isn't like, this conversation is then all be all. Tomorrow, the new operating hours, this is really a lot about transparency, council input. We've been doing a lot of work on talking to other municipalities, talking to business owners, talking to our own staff. Jim from the union, the clerks' office is here to discuss more. But we had negotiated with them, with the clerks' union, that we would go potentially to a new, more cohesive and consistent four days, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That would be some, that'd actually be 44 hours of open services versus 42 where we're currently at, and just give some consistency to, so that people could know when we're open. I know there's been a lot of issues with that on just how to figure out when city hall hours are open based on this four different times, you know, depending on the day. But Councilor Halloran and I, I think we, I don't mean to speak for you here, and you can speak up as well, but we noticed some councilors wanted some additional information, and we both felt, I think at the time, that we wanted to have a little more public input than happened the last time. So, Carrie's got a presentation with what she's found out, what we've been talking to management team about, and what we talk to our customers, but we wanted to have a little more. Maybe I'll send it over to you, Councilor Halloran, if you wanted to say something before Carrie starts up.
If you don't mind, I was on the finance committee when this flew through the finance committee. I don't know that it ever flew to the council about the the previous city manager was trying to appease everybody, and he was trying to come up with a new schedule. And, and I, at the time, said, well, if you're going to do anything, why don't you do a four-day work week? Well, we're going to work towards that, and we've made assurances to the staff towards that, but this is just a stepping stone. Well, the stepping stone's a disaster, and nobody knows when you're open, nobody knows anything. It's going to be the same disaster, whatever happens, for six months afterwards, until everybody understands that city hall is open, blah, blah, blah. Same days, same amount of time. Eventually, I think it will benefit everybody. And if you look around in the private world and in the public world, four-day work weeks are a huge employee retention. And so, you know, my world, I would prefer eight to five, the tradition, but that isn't reality. So, retention of employees is important, and I don't like this half-day Friday, long-day Thursday. Nobody in their right mind can figure that one out. So, my, through this union negotiations and chatter about it, I have to say that I was in favor of this seven to six because Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth has an hour from seven to eight, and Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth has an hour from five to six, four days a week consistently. There's no guess what day is it, what time of the year. It's, it's, those are the hours. And it, it was something that I think was talked about during that, and I realize there's a lot of moving parts, and you're going to have to figure out the rest of city hall and all of that good stuff. But you can't make false promises to employees. And there's been, there's been some assurances made, and we're all left here to pick up the pieces and move forward. Go for it.
All right, great. Thank you all. So, Charlie did an excellent introduction on what we're going to talk about. Really, you know, there isn't any formal action being requested. This is really just informational to have a discussion with everybody, and again, for the transparency purposes. The, the ultimate goal really, when this was first discussed, to make this transition, or I should start with back when, in January of 2024, the current schedule was being proposed as sort of a stepping stone to eventually get to that four-day work week. And it has caused some confusion on hours of operation and things like that. I have not heard any direct complaints regarding that, but I don't typically work directly with the public. So, my limited acts. directly with the public, so my limited access and interactions with the public probably doesn't help, I think the clerks probably could provide some more insight on that, but, you know, as Charlie mentioned, we'd be looking to do Monday through Thursday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, this does result in two extra hours of availability and access for the public, currently, we're open 42 hours a week, this would open us up to 44 hours a week, each day would be consistent hours across each day, so we did, HR specialists did reach out to some other municipalities in the state, I will say, our deputy city clerk, Caitlin Miller, did a, a survey back probably about a year ago, of, of 90 towns in, in the state, and I, there are more that have converted to a four-day work week than haven't, guaranteed, some of those towns are smaller and have different needs than we do, so we certainly do not want to limit access to the public, some of the, the reports that we've received, I did put the spreadsheet in your packet, but we'll just kind of highlight some of the, the towns that are a little closer in size to Ellsworth, and what they experienced, one of the, the recurring themes was that it was really good for morale, staff morale improved with the additional time off, and that people were afforded that, whether, some towns have Mondays off, some have Fridays, but that, having that business day off during the week allowed for staff to handle their own business during that time, and not have to take time off from work to attend appointments and, and things like that, so the town of Bath, they made the switch, and they do kind of have some, some varying schedules depending on what department you work in, but for their employees that are on the four 10-hour days, had a positive impact on morale, staff and employees felt that their requests were heard, having, really, they really enjoy having a long weekend and having more time for personal activities, the public did have an adjustment period, but there were no actual complaints, they did hear that the community members were happy to have extended hours in the morning and afternoon, and that they received far more complaints about the former 8:30 to 4:30 schedule, the city of Bitterford experienced nothing but positive feedback from employees regarding the schedule change, however, they did have to work hard to accommodate any employees that may have been negatively affected by the transition, offering some flex time for alternative schedules for those that had children in daycare, and there, there were a few citizen complaints, but mostly it was positive feedback, Bucksport, they did make the switch back, I think it was 2017, and I apologize, I did not write it down, but many residents have expressed that the longer hours of operation each day works out well for them, because they do not have to take off time from work to make it into city, or the town hall, to do their business, there were a couple of people that complained, but it was very minimal, staff has adjusted very well, and they enjoy having the additional day off, when the transition was made, staff members were strongly encouraged to schedule their doctor's appointments and personal needs for Fridays to avoid missing work hours during the week, Freeport, they did make the change to save on energy costs, the public does like the consistent hours, they're open 42 hours a week, but all of their employees work 37 and a half hours, so the schedules do vary a little bit, so they kind of have adjusting shifts for availability, it can present some challenges with sick or vacation absences, but it really has not caused any significant issues that they've seen. Kidderi, they transitioned to a four-day, 10-hour day work week back in 2017, it did sometimes pose problems for employees with children that were in daycare, however, the, the town did make the transition, with the exception of the police department, of course, some of their other locations have different hours, including public works, and the town clerk's department chose to do the five-day schedule, which allowed them to reopen that, that one section of City Hall on Fridays, overall, it has been positively received for the group, but they seem to kind of give their departments their autonomy to choose how they wanted to, to move forward with that, let's see, what else, the town of Winslow, Winslow, staff is much happier, the public does like it, although they have received some complaints, they do still have many people that try to come in on Fridays, that have, were not aware of the schedule change, none of their staff has small children in daycare, so they have not experienced any issues there, and they did give some of their staff members option for an alternative schedule if they are not public-facing, which seems like that is, we've heard some of that from a lot of places, is that if you're not a public-facing employee, they've kind of given some little flexibility in the hours, Wyndham made the transition, they're closed on Fridays, for those unable to work the schedule, the town manager allowed department heads to flex time as long as the public's needs were met, the town of Union, happier employees and better retention, they did receive some complaints from the public due to accessibility, but nothing major, the town of Sanford, pros were work-life balance, hiring and retention was much better, they were open earlier in the morning, later in the evening for citizens to have access, and then the cons, again, were the daycare issues for folks with young children, and notifying of citizens that not everybody was made aware of the change, so really, it seems like the, the themes are recurring, it seems like it is positive for staff morale, staff do like it, and the, I think, you know, for folks that work the hours that we work here at City Hall, it does give them the opportunity to get in here during the week, whether in the morning or in the evening, but, you know, it does limit us to four days a week as opposed to five, which we currently have, I mean, we're closing at 12:30 on Friday, and I'm not sure, I mean, Sue might be able to, to provide a little more insight as to, you know, how many folks we're seeing coming in on the short day on Friday, I don't believe we have a lot of traffic in here after five on Thursdays, which I think is very limited, we were hoping that being open till 6:30 on Thursdays would provide citizens that work until the traditional 5:00 PM an opportunity to get in here and, and do what they need to do, I think a lot of our services are available online as well, which helps, so, it's really all I had, Charlie.
Could I just follow up a little bit, that, to, to make sure that we're not clouding the message, I, I think ultimately what Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth need to know is, City Hall potentially is gonna be open from 7:00 to 6:00, Monday through Thursday, the employee adjustments is something that management needs to deal with, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth need to know when it's open, and
Sure.
How it's open is a management thing, and we need to be creative in that, because maybe there'll be times that from 7:00 to 8:00, you only need one person or two people as opposed to full staff, I, I don't know, but I don't want to cloud the issue, I think the issue is, let's, let's identify when City Hall is gonna be open and when that's gonna happen, and then let management figure out how to tweak that to make it work, and solve the daycare issues and the personal needs of the individual.
A hundred percent, we've got a bunch of, we've already had two meetings with management staff on this and some of those details, a lot of our, obviously the police and fire, and our other 24-hour services will still be available as such, some of our organizations, I think in the highway department, they're already on a Monday through Thursday, 10-hour schedule, so Ellsworth really from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it's actually, at least what I'm seeing here is the most expansive operating hours of those that have gone to the four-day municipal work week, so for Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth, or Citizen Ellsworth, it's, that's, you know, that's 44 hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 6:00 PM, we'll figure out the other pieces, they're a little complicated, I'd also note that, to the point on the staff, on this kind of promises that we made in the past piece, too, I did talk to Sue Lassard, Bucksport Town Manager, and she said this has been incredible for them, other towns like Blue Hill is going to three days a week now, just because they had some staff turnover, that's meaning they have to be in that category, and Sue brought it to Bucksport, I know, so this isn't about reducing City Hall hours, we're gonna keep in expansive matters, it's getting clarity and consistency, Sue also, she said she brought this to Hamden, and they're 7:30 to 6:00, kind of post the Great Recession, so this isn't entirely new, but I really, we had 20% turnover the year before I got here, about 15% over the last year, you know, 35% of turnover in an organization at that period of time, with other municipalities going to this schedule, I'd like to get, there are some details on how PTO works internally that will need to be ironed out, I know also, I think you had the perfect, your first thing, Steve, was like the most perfect recitation of the need to move to this, I think I can imagine that six months, there's gonna be, it's gonna be some change, but the change is gonna be for the better, I think most people will focus on the change as loss from what's lost on the Friday, and not the gain on Monday through Thursday, you have 7:00 AM to, you know, to 8:00 AM, really 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM to get those things done, I know that'll be helpful for the customer.
One more point on that, from an experience in Hamden, first time I went to Hamden, I have some excises there, and, first time I went and found them closed, I'm like, ah, jeez, you know, I was disappointed, but I remembered the next year that, that's four days a week, which day are they closed, so I called ahead, whereas the half-day Friday business, I don't know that I ever would have picked up on that, but I did recall from that first trip, that, hey, there's a, there's one day they're closed, let's find out when it is, and it entered into memory, and it stuck, so I think there's something about that.
And if, I don't know, Jim, if you could maybe say a few things on what the clerks' perspectives are on this, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
Hi, Jim Killam, Clerk's Office, from the clerk's perspective, very excited to work a four-day work week, I've been here about a year and a half, and we've worked, you know, with a half-hour lunch, and a long day Thursday, and a short day Friday, and with the proposed changes, we're excited about it, but we're a little pessimistic, that's maybe not the right word, but we'd be going from a half-hour lunch to a full-hour lunch, which makes us stay an extra half hour on the tail end, from the clerk's perspective, we would be delirious with 7:00 to 5:30, with the same half-hour lunch that we've had for, since I've been here, working the Thursday nights until 6:30, I can tell you, the number of people that come in after 5:30 is usually zero, I'm not a gambling person, but we like to bet for bragging rights, and the over/under is one, and under usually wins, you know, so I think, I, I understand the rationale from staying 7:00 to 6:00, but I think it would be more effective and a little better for morale to open 7:00 to 5:30.
Totally against that, 7:00 to 6:00 is, we, we need round hours, we don't need half-hours, that gets us into this, another problem of when you're open, when you're closed, you need full round hours, now, having said that, and I said this in the past, I think we're, we're, I think you're talking about the clerk's perspective, and that's fine, maybe there's a way management can find that for the people that need that, but the hours at City Hall need to be 7:00 to 6:00, 40s a week, how we achieve that, maybe the clerks can be accommodated some way, somehow, and the way it starts out, month one, and the way it is month six, may be totally different, but the public needs to know those hours aren't gonna change, 7:00 to 6:00, maybe, maybe there is someone that can do a half-an-hour lunch, and maybe at 5:30, and, and maybe there is someone that can come in at 7:30 instead of 7:00, but Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth don't need to be concerned with all the, the employee movement, they need to be concerned about when the hours are open, and to stick that one step further, just, just because City Hall is open 7:00 to 6:00, it doesn't necessarily mean, I think the access to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth is what we're after, not that everybody have the same schedule.
Yep, agreed, yeah, we can definitely work on that in some of the more detailed management, but point taken, Steve, on getting that 7:00 to 6:00, that broad opening hours, how we work that out with, to your points, Jim, to make it best for staff, and also some of the other pieces brought here, if we have folks with kids, I know myself, that's a lot to put on my, my wife for pickups and drop-offs and management pieces, but, you know, we can arrange to have somebody in city management here for that 7:00 to 6:00 hours, Monday through Thursday, and there might be some other management touchpoints on Friday, but, you know, we're gonna get our 40-plus hours out of these groups, and I don't think we really have an issue with people not working enough here, there's insane, it's almost, how do we get stuff done, we're always working weekends, I know in the management corps, it's, how do we work more effectively with all the overtime we're already putting in, so.
Well, I think, is anyone else from the public, or the city?
Ebony would like to say.
Ebony?
I just don't really know what to say. Put her on the spot.
I'd just like to point out, we do have some people that don't live very close, so if we were open till 6:00 every night, they're gonna be home at 7:00.
It's nine o'clock now, and we're all here.
Yeah, I think there's, I think to Ebony's point, right, and to the point, like, we need to, there's a lot to accommodate, to Steve's point, it's the public and access to City Hall, but we also have staff, and we want to make sure that it works for everyone, and
And it's not fair if that's, you know, say that one person gets to leave at 5:30 every night, that's not fair to someone else, so.
Agreed, it's, it's gotta be a balance behind the scenes, City Hall needs to be open 7:00 to 6:00, but it also needs to be accommodated behind the scenes for the people.
So we'll dive in, Carrie and I, before we make any types of change, there'll be a
I've been here almost two years, but I agree with Jim, I think 5:30 is better, I've seen way more people sitting out front at 7:30 when I get here than people after 5:00.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I saw that this morning, there was people coming in earlier, so work out, work out some of the details on this 7:00 to 6:00 piece, there will be some issues there, and also, to your great points, Ebony, on, yeah, on the, the timing piece, I know, but there's also the benefit, if you're living farther away, one day a week, you don't have to make that 40-minute drive in, drive out, that's an hour, and 20 minutes every week, every year, that's days of people's lives that they can give back, we have already modified our management technology systems so that, and Steve, I know when we get that snow day, and you've, there's no such thing, especially with some of the remote work options we have, and the management team being able to work on the computers, that those, those snow days, whilst they call, might have to be closed, and our hourly employees there might not be that, our management employees will be expected to be on the computers, and work schedules to proceed at pace, so there's some benefits there, too.
That doesn't bother me a bit, it's open at City Hall, we're in Maine, we're gonna have snow days.
Yeah.
All right, well, unless anyone else has any thoughts, I think we've had a good discussion, and we'll wait to hear more as the city staff works on figuring out the new implementation of hours, and look forward to the update.
Great.
The next matter on the agenda is an executive session, so unless you're sitting at this table, you have to leave.
Can I leave, too?
I was just gonna say, and a five-minute break.
We'd like, we, yeah, we'd definitely have a five-minute break, with no more than five minutes.
Well, you gotta, you gotta make, it's gotta be voted on.
I know, agenda number 23.
There will be a, there will be a vote after executive session, if anybody wants to.
Staff doesn't have to stay around.
Move to adjourn for five minutes?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
You're not adjourned.
Or move to, whatever, pause?
Yep.
We're paused.
Joe adjourned.
Don't adjourn, we're just paused.
Okay, we're back on the record. Council agenda item number 24, council order 072512, discussion and action on the city manager's annual review and salary change. Is there a motion from the council? Councilor Moe?
Move to approve an increase in the city's manag-- city manager's salary from 130,000 to 140,000 per year. And based on the annual review from council and to encumber $3,178.27 from General Ledger 10110-50500 for the FY 2025's portion of his back pay to April 1st.
I second that Congresswoman.
Have we needed to get that?
Most of the numbers.
Okay, it's recorded, you can go back and get it. We have a second, any further discussion from council, from city manager?
I'd just like to thank the council for this vote of confidence and it's been the honor of my life over the last year to be the city manager of this organization and to work with this amazing staff and community to move us forward. I'm so excited about the years ahead and as I mentioned in the executive session, talking to the city manager and trying to recruit an incredible candidate here, we mentioned that this type of work isn't about resume building, it's more about obituary building. It's about building that thing, it's a life's work. We talked about that in my first conversation with the council about why I was interested in the job. You know, being a Castine resident and relying on Ellsworth as a service center, you know, I'd like to be here for a while, but I know that, you know, I have so much family and love of Castine and this region that this has been the job that I have loved the most because it's given me the opportunity to do those life's work type projects. And I'm so excited for the next year and hopefully many more years after that to continue forward. I'd also note that whatever way the vote goes for this, that I release any counselors from any sort of executive privilege to talk to reporters or anybody else about my performance and where they think I've gone well, maybe where they think I could come up better. I've talked with staff about those pieces, we've talked about that frankly, we all do well, we all don't do as well. So please feel free to discuss at will, it's the only way we move forward, so that's it.
All right.
Thanks Charlie.
Well with that, all those in favor, opposed, okay, motion carries. Item 25 adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in third? Would we like a lengthy discussion on the, all those in favor?
Thank you everybody.